I'd like to call the order of this August 24, 2020 meeting of the Powhatan Board of Supervisors. Tonight, we're continuing with a hybrid form of meetings where we have both people in attendance and people that will be calling in or listening in or watching remotely. For those that'll be listening into our meeting tonight, I'm going to introduce who is at the meeting up here on stage. Join us remotely tonight is District Two Supervisor Larry Norvik.
Good evening.
To my left is the District, excuse me, Three Supervisor, Mr. Mike Byler. To my immediate left is our County Administrator, Mr. Ned Smither. To my far right is our County Attorney, Mr. Latchney. Next to him is Mrs. Karen Carmack, District Five Supervisor, and to my immediate right is Mr. Bill Cox, District Four Supervisor. Ned, will you share with the folks how they can join us remotely tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During the public comment period, you may raise your hand using your Zoom controls or simply press star nine on your phone to comment. Thank you.
Tonight, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Cox, will you do the invocation for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd remain standing, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for another wonderful day in Powhatan. Help us to be wise stewards of our community's needs and give us the wisdom to keep Powhatan a great place to live. Amen.
Board members, do I have any request to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes to the order presentation tonight? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Tonight, we will have our first public comment period. If you're here for one of our other public hearings tonight, please hold your comments and then make them at that public hearing. So if you have any other comments which you would like to bring forward to the board tonight, please do so. Our first public hearing is now open. Please come down if you wish to address the board. Please give your name, your address. If you're representing yourself, we allow you three minutes. If you're representing a group, we will allow you five minutes.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Betty Walters. I'm at 1013 Marky Ford Road.
Welcome.
As you guys have noticed, there's been some kind of chatter about a mailing that was sent out recently regarding the forest and land use, the reevaluation form for agricultural property and recertification form for forest and land use. Requesting in the land use in that form, there is a request for a forest management plan. This sparked interest in some of us trying to find out what exactly has led up to this forest management plan request. It also led to kind of uncovering another issue that also sparked interest regarding a letter that was sent to the Attorney General's Office regarding ROBAC taxes and how that applies. So today, I ask, what exactly sparked the interest and what exactly was the board thinking that generated an opinion letter to be sent to the Attorney General's Office for a definition of ROBAC taxes to even be on the Board of Supervisors radar?
Thank you, ma'am. Is that your comments for this evening?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this is, the board doesn't respond at this time.
Okay.
This is for you to bring forward information or comments to the board.
Okay.
Okay.
So we are, we're very interested in this. So how do I find the way?
We will have somebody follow up with you if we don't cover it under Supervisor Comments tonight.
Okay.
We will have somebody get in touch with you and provide you with explanation either from the board or from our Commissioner of Revenue.
All right. Thank you so much, sir.
Anyone else wishing to come forward and address the board this evening? Seeing no one, I will close the first public comment period. We have a consent agenda tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on a motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Tonight, we have a presentation on Department of Social Services Senior Services Improvement Program update. So that should be of keen interest to a couple of us up here.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. For those of you that may not know who I am, I'm Sharon Rochelle. I'm the Director of the Powhatan County Department of Social Services, and I have Jane Lloyd here with me tonight, who has taken the responsibility of handling the volunteer driver services. And as you probably are aware, we have been doing that program for probably close to a year now. Unfortunately, with COVID-19 hitting, we were, we had to stop doing the volunteer driver program. However, with Jane's position in place, in addition to our volunteers, we were able to kind of change what we were doing with our seniors and actually providing a different kind of service. We were doing food deliveries with them, medication deliveries when needed. Jane also came up with the idea of the Grand Pals program and trying to keep people from the social isolation piece of all of this. We were having our volunteers actually making phone calls to our seniors, just checking on them. The other thing that resulted from this is a connection occurred because our volunteers did not realize who their neighbors were and how close some folks that lived, some seniors lived by them. So it actually kind of brought our community together, both with the realization that our seniors are out there, they need help, and the volunteers, you know, began to know who those folks were and what their needs were. So many issues have come out of the last couple of months, and although COVID-19 has been devastating, we've also learned a lot about our senior community. I'm going to have Jane share some of this tonight with all of you because I think it's an awareness that all of you need to pay attention to. And then talking about what we can do moving forward, the Department of Social Services has an Adult Protective Services Program, but we don't really have a senior services program. And I think we've been not really collaborating and it's not been a cohesive effort in meeting our seniors' needs. And what I would like to do going forward is to be able to develop, develop those services. And I'm really here tonight to make you aware of what those needs are. I'm not asking for money. I'm really just asking for your support and, and how we move this forward. So with that being said, I would like Jane to take a few minutes to go over what we found out from our focus groups because it really doesn't matter what I think folks need. What really matters is what they would like to see happen. The one thing that, that came out of this, and since I'm one of those people entering my golden years, is are they really the golden years for our seniors or is it more of a feeling that they're not being paid attention to and that helped? And one of the fears in asking for help is, I think, with people who live alone and don't have family, is if somebody comes into their home to give them services, are they going to say, "You can't live alone anymore," and ask them to leave their home someplace that they've lived in most of their life, paid taxes on, and now they're in a situation where, you know, maybe they'd have to move to a skilled nursing facility rather than to be able to age in place in, in their home. What I'd like to see moving forward is as we develop some of these services, making Powhatan a more livable community for our seniors and, you know, what that would look like for them. So I'm going to turn this over to Jane, who has their ideas of what they'd like to see happen, and then a couple of them would also like the opportunity to tell you themselves what it is that they'd like to see going forward. So, and Jane had a little mishap in her backyard the other day, so I apologize.
Yeah. Would you be able to advance slides for me? Or do I? Oh, okay. Okay. All right. I appreciate very much you allowing us a brief time to come and just emphasize the fact that although elderhood is often associated with physical decline, it's also a state of development. So we can't talk about senior living in Powhatan without stopping and acknowledging the increase in this demographic. This population, a study was published by a demographics group out of University of Virginia, and this demographic of people 60 and over, over the next 20 years will increase at a rate of over 41%. So it's quite substantial. I want to stop and highlight a little bit of what ageism might look like in our community. It might be tempted to believe that the needs of seniors are negligible or safely dismissed or disregarded in comparison with the needs of people and age groups with lives that are full ahead of them. And also, we find ourselves in a very interesting era. Ageism in the COVID-19 era, it was highlighted, and I quote, Dr. Tracy Gendron of VCU Gerontology stated that COVID-19 has brought to the surface a pervasive feeling that elders are disposable. The one bright spot has been this catalyzing moment. Ageism as an egregious and national problem has been brought from the back burner to the forefront. There is a light shining on it. We've held a focus group with some of our seniors on July 9, and our major findings were that they want to be active and heard. They want resources to enrich their lives. They want to be valued for the ways that they can give back. They want to be valued for their life experience and their knowledge, and they want to be valued for being a thriving part of our community. Another, another unanimous desire among them is the desire for a senior center with permanent space, open regularly, programs and presentations, many of which can be obtained for free. There's a lot of resources out there for that. Socialization and lifelong learning is very, very desired among our seniors. And also, just for casual activities, a place to, they can join together when they want to and just have casual activities When we talk about the value of age, age, age in our communities, it affects our communities bringing valuable expertise and social capital that can only be provided through elderhood. And there's also risk with the aged population. The American Society on Aging states that for adults 50 and over, being socially isolated is linked to risk of dementia, coronary heart disease, diabetes, depression, and stroke. It may rival the impact of smoking and obesity on health. Another risk, this article was put out by the University of California, and it noted some serious health problems and death among older adults. Older adults who describe themselves as lonely have a 59% greater increase of functional decline and 45% greater risk of So what we're really highlighting is the need for social interaction. It's essential for physical and mental health and well-being. The health and benefits of human social interaction are plentiful, delaying memory loss, improving mood, stimulating appetite, and decreasing mortality. And this was quoted from the National Resource Center on Nutrition and Aging. So let's learn from other communities. Penn State News put out a study. They had focus groups of seniors that do participate in senior centers, and what they found through those discussions is that senior center attendees have a strong desire and drive for self-determination and to meet the, meet their needs of autonomy, competence, relatedness, and seniors who indicated they enjoy reliable, meaningful activities that include social interaction with their peers. And participants also said that spending time at senior centers helped them to achieve their goals. So when we think about aging in Powhatan, we want to value and embrace the entire spectrum of the lived experience that will be reflected in our person-centered attitude in interactions and the resources that we need to make available in our community for that population. Let's make Powhatan a place where seniors have a community outlet for creativity and socialization and connection, enrichment and learning, a place where seniors are valued by their community and are engaged and thriving, and where they are heard, where they have more opportunities to volunteer and share with each other. My last point is that every generation has an investment and an interest in the next. This isn't just about our current day senior population. This is about the future of us all in Powhatan. Are there any, are there any questions? Is there any questions that you have? No?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna take just a quick opportunity while I'm up here because it would take me forever to get back up here. Two seniors that, one is in attendance and prefers not to speak. She wanted me to read her comments, and the other is at home avoiding exposure. So Cordelia Davis, she is, she lives on Cook Road. She wanted me to state, "Dear Board members, my name is Cordelia Davis, and I am a 71-year-old lifelong resident of Powhatan County. I would like to see more emphasis put on the seniors in Powhatan. While there are some programs that are doing well, I think a lot more can be done. We need a senior center that all seniors can come to, a place where we can have guest speakers, demonstrations that interest seniors, and a place where we can socialize and have conversations. Since some of the seniors do not drive, I am one, one of the ones that do not drive perhaps some type of transportation, a place where seniors can come and perhaps have a healthy meal. These are only a few of the things that I think seniors in Powhatan would like. I'm quite sure there are many more suggestions. Thank you for the opportunity to speak." And just, this is Ramona Thompson, and she is quite humorous in her comments. She says, "During normal times, I would like to request a room or house just for seniors. We like to get together and solve all the world's problems, talk politics. We are missing out during this pandemic for the fun of discussing President Trump and Joe Biden. Can you imagine all the jokes and remarks that no one knows about? The majority of seniors live alone or wish they did live alone. We like to play cards, puzzles, read and exchange books and discuss those books, eat and exchange recipes, paint and draw. Maybe we can do a picture of you. We like to complain about heat and cold weather. Now we have no one to tell since we're all alone. Are you offering your phone number? So, dear Board of Supervisors, if you could find space for us to get together daily, it would be so nice. We promise to take good care of the place." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Please, Mr. Norvik.
Hi, and good evening, everybody, since I didn't get a chance to say beforehand to my colleagues. I just want to, I didn't have any questions, but I do have a comment. My father is going to turn 88 years old in a couple of months, and he lives alone, and COVID has drastically affected my father and the neighborhood. He lives in a age-restricted neighborhood. They used to, they meaning the neighbors, used to meet up at the community center where they have a pool, whirlpool, an indoor track, a pool table, is it library, you name it, big workout area, barbecue place out on a deck, et cetera, et cetera. And that was the, the heartbeat of the community. And when COVID hit, they had to close the whole building down for months. They finally have opened it, and you can schedule a time slot. My dad gets 45 minutes every morning to walk around the track and lift a few weights, but there's hardly anybody in there. And just this weekend, my father and I were talking. It was like, well, are you getting out? Are you walking up and down the street? And he said, "Yeah, I do that a few times, but you can only look out the window so many times." And, you know, that hit me like, wow, he's basically living in a cabin in the middle of nowhere. He may as well be, even though he's got probably 300 houses around him. Isolation is a real problem. People need to be creative in finding ways to fill their time, but you can only do so much. So this is a community effort, I'm convinced. So anyway, I just think the things that I've heard tonight are right on target, and if there's something we can do to help that process along, I'm 110% in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Norvik.
Hi, I'm Norbert Hicks.
Were you one of the scheduled speakers in support of?
Of the seniors?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
My name's Norbert Hicks. I live on Rocky Oak Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. My family's been here since the 30s and have been paying taxes in Powhatan since then. I've been here since 62. My family has lived there their whole life, but my point being that we have paid taxes into the county. I'm coming up from 65 years old, and, you know, I get lonely at home because as, as I've aged, and as I suppose a lot of us, our children grow up and they go away. Now, they don't keep very good contact, if any of y'all understand that. So I might see my daughter or my son once a year. You know, it's just not enough, but that's the way it is. And, and because of that, I get lonely. I get depressed. You know, I feel discarded somewhat. And when out in public, young people hardly even notice us. You know, it's like we don't exist. And I can understand that to a degree, but we do exist, and we need some help. We need a place to go where we can all talk and share our experiences. Because when we used to sit on the porch and talk to the older gentleman, they gave us a lot of information and taught us a lot. The stories were funny. The stories were fun. And you just don't get to do that anymore. If a senior center in place was here and we could all share our stories and talk to each other, you know, I think that depression could be lessened, that anxiety could be lessened, that loneliness could slip away slightly. Because anytime we wanted to, we could show up. Those are us that can drive and are ambulatory, but I'm sure that people could be brought there. My, as my personal self, I feel intensely about the senior center because I know that I'm gonna get older, that I'm gonna need a place to go and talk to people. I need it now, actually. It'd be a pleasure to work with others in the aging community as well as myself. We all have things to share. We all have life's experiences, and we all have to help each other. You know, that's about all I have to say. But thank you very much for letting me speak.
Next, we'll go to our appointments for the evening. We have an appointment for the Social Services Board. Do we have any nominees?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Carmack?
I would like to nominate Mr. Neil Stout.
Okay, do I have a second on that? Do I have any other nominees? If not, any discussion on the second?
Mr. Chairman, I have just one item.
Yes.
It's unrelated to this, I'm sorry, but I just noticed that it appears there are two hands raised among the attendees, and we might have just skipped past them when we went into this. So I just thought I'd bring it up.
Well, this is not the time for public comment.
No, I know. I'm, I'm wondering if they wanted to comment on what we just wrapped up about the senior center.
Again, this is not the time to do that. This is a presentation tonight, but we would be happy to have those comments later at the second public comment period.
Okay. I didn't know if they were part of that process because those hands were up during it. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have a second, and we have any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Texas, next to the Richmond Area Transportation Planning Organization Technical Advisory Committee Alternate Member.
I'm gonna nominate Brett Chertin.
Anybody else?
I don't know.
Okay. Do we have a second? I will second the motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Next, we have the Central Virginia Transportation Authority Designate.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cox?
No one objects. I would like to fill then.
Okay, this is the person that fills in in the absence of the chief elected official, which is the Chairman of the Board. We have to provide 48 hours' notice of who will be filling in in those cases where I can't attend. So, Mr. Cox, if expressed interest, I'll nominate Mr. Cox. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Okay. This brings us to our first public hearing, and this is our cell tower. Welcome, Mr. Pompey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first public hearing for tonight is case number 20-02-CUP. This is a request by Selco Partnership for a conditional use permit to allow a telecommunications tower up to 200 feet in height within the Agricultural 10A10 zoning district. The proposed tower will be located on Tax Map Parcel 52-16, which is 3043 Moira Road in the southeastern part of the county, which includes District Two. The parcel is 148.30 acres, and the tower itself will be located within a 10,000-square-foot leased area. The 2019 Long Range Companies of Plan designates the subject property as rural preservation and natural conservation. This particular request was first discussed at the meeting on July 27, 2020. The board discussed this item, and after discussion, voted to defer the case for 30 days with a vote of 5 to 0. The public hearing was not held at the last meeting, so we will need to hold the public hearing tonight. The applicant doesn't have a presentation plan, but their representative, Mark Cronenthal, is here to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. So at this time, I'll open the Okay, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to come down and speak to this matter before the board, please do so. Give your name, your address. We'll allow you three minutes. If you're speaking for a group, we'll allow you five minutes. Not seeing anyone come forward, I will close the public hearing or the public comment on this public hearing. We discussed last time, I believe, in working with the applicant to ironize some details about possibly co-locating. And do we have any progress in terms of those discussions, Mr. Pompey?
Mr. Chairman.
So the applicant has not offered a formal agreement with Powhatan County to allow co-location informally via email. They've expressed their willingness to do so, but there's no formal agreement between Powhatan County and the applicant.
So we, don't go anywhere, Mr. Pompey. So we don't have anything, but how much time do we have to get this resolved?
The Board of Supervisors has to make a decision per state law on a CUP within one hundred and fifty days.
So we've got time to continue to work with the applicant on this matter. Is that correct?
Mr. Norberg is looking for you.
I'll get to him in a second.
It's only been deferred one time.
Okay. Mr. Norvig, did you have something?
I just have a little bit of input that's relevant to what you were just talking about, David. And I did email back and forth with Mark, and I understand it. I think you just said he's in the audience tonight. The salient point, I think, that I got from his email, besides the fact that they've been very helpful, and I appreciate that, is that, I believe it is in Virginia code that, it doesn't preclude us from working further, don't get me wrong, but it does say in Virginia code that we cannot use the fact of whether we can share space or not on the tower as a determining factor of handing out the CUP. So I just wanted to bring that up. I had not known that before, but I did see it in code. So if anybody was thinking, well, you know, if we don't get our twenty feet of rad space or whatever for a broadband antenna, then I'm going to kill this project. I think legally, we're not allowed to do that, so in case anybody was going down that trail, I found that very helpful information. And there were some other minor things that I cleared up. But I'm actually ready to move forward on this project, just my two cents.
Mr. Cox, Chairman. Counsel for the applicant has been interested in finding another way in which to resolve this. Has indicated that he would be coming forth with a letter of intent. We don't have that, so I would ask that we defer this to our next meeting. Is that a motion?
That is a motion, sir.
Do I have a second on the motion? I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
Question?
Yes, Mr. Byerly.
Mr. Jim. Would the applicant's attorney like to come up and address them? It seems as though he wanted to say something. I don't know.
We've already made the motion. We have a discussion. I will withdraw the motion at this time to allow the applicants' representatives to come and speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mark Cronenthal. I'm counsel for Verizon.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Yes, the intention behind the recent state law changes that really sort of have us where we are in this discussion here is that the cell tower providers are preventing, taking any item outside the commercially ordinary cycle of business and also preventing proprietary information from being disclosed. In this case, Verizon has agreed to provide the public safety space on the tower at no cost to the county. So the public safety space would be provided at no cost. Whenever we discussed with Verizon counsel, internal counsel, and Verizon representatives, of course, they have been meeting and discussing since our last meeting with staff, have agreed to those terms. But a letter of intent at this time without approval would not be appropriate. It would not be commercially ordinary. It would be an imposition since state law of a business term in a zoning matter.
So let me follow up with, you know, what you've just shared with us. You're saying that this is going to happen?
Of course, with your permission, the tower would happen. And yes, we're willing to commit to providing the space for public safety use at no cost.
Any questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Cox.
When will we get the agreement?
The agreement, it's typically provided whenever, during the permitting phase. The permitting phase, the building permit phase.
So you want, I'm sorry, you want to provide that after approval?
Correct, sir.
So. We're not permitted to deny because of space. But there are no restrictions for us, since this is a CUP, to put a condition on there that you provide us with space and approve it?
Yes, sir, there is. The state law specifically requires.
I thought we want to try, I thought we want to try and void that cat race and that you want to go ahead and provide us with an agreement enliding so that we could then pass this, knowing comfortably that everything was in place. I thought your suggestion was a wonderful idea. I'm just a little disappointed it hadn't been delivered yet.
Again, sir, I was very clear in the last meeting that we would not agree to a condition or requirement.
Understand, but you also suggested in the voicemails that you left that this agreement was forthcoming. And now you're suggesting that maybe someday later on, when y'all get around to it, we'll get it.
We have provided an email, and the county has made its application. You are first in line. We have agreed to the price of zero for public safety. But it would take it absolutely out of commercially ordinary process and make it a zoning item and not a business item against the intention of the General Assembly and the statute.
Mr. Lackney, this really falls in our county attorney's court, okay?
Mr. Chairman, counsel for Verizon as their agent has made a representation that an offer is on the table for us to use. Is it the top twenty percent? I mean, what is it we get?
Yes, sir, so that would be the top twenty percent.
For public safety?
For public safety purposes.
So their agent has made an offer. I believe if you pass this, you've accepted their offer. And all the document itself will do is formalize the terms that it'll offer. But I do believe that their agent is binding them by this offer if you approve and accept the offer.
If that's true, then I'm very happy to move forward.
Mr. Norberg, do you have a motion for us tonight?
I do. Let me back up just real quick. Let me just read this sentence, and if Mr. Lashley would maybe comment on this or give a thumbs up or thumbs down or something. So Virginia Code, Section fifteen point two, I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing here. Code of Virginia, Section fifteen-two, and it goes into twenty-three sixteen point four, colon, two, et cetera. It says, locality shall not condition or require the approval of an application solely on the basis of the applicant's agreement to allow any wireless facilities provided or operated in whole or in part by a locality or by any other entity to be placed at or co-located with the applicant's project. So in line with that, you know, a shall not is a pretty strong statement. So as a locality, are we allowed to condition approval of the application based on receiving space for, you know, nine eleven stuff or whatever?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think we'll pass that. We're not conditioning, and we're certainly not requiring. The council has proffered.
Agreed.
Agreed. So if you pass it, you're accepting the statement, the offer that they have made. And so it's all strictly voluntary, above-board, legal. There's not a problem.
Okay, thanks, Tom. In that case, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion?
Please.
All right, I move to approve ordinance oh-two-zero-twenty-dash-eleven, case twenty-oh-two-CUP. And that's in accordance with public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice that we approve the request submitted by Selco Partnership, Verizon Wireless, to permit a telecommunications tower on tax map parcel fifty-two-sixteen, subject to the conditions presented in the staff report.
Do I have a second on motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
One real quick thing. There's a couple of neighbors that didn't really like the idea of a tower being out their window. And I kind of canvassed a few other people, and there was no strong pushback to this project in District Two. So although I feel a bit bad about the people who aren't going to enjoy it, there was no real opposition in District Two to this project. So that's why I'm going ahead with it. Just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norberg. Mr. Smither, will you call the row?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Norberg?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye.
Ms. Karmak?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Okay. This takes us to our next public hearing. And this is the Markel Eagle Partners rezoning. Mr. Pompey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This second public hearing of the night is ordinance number oh-dash-two-zero-twenty-dash-oh-four, which is case number nineteen-dash-oh-six-dash-re-z-c. Markel Eagle Partners LLC is requesting the rezoning of several parcels, tax map parcel forty-two-dash-fifty-five-A, forty-two-dash-fifty-five-B, forty-two-dash-fifty-seven-G, and forty-two-dash-seventy-two. Those parcels total forty-three point one-five acres. They're currently zoned agricultural ten and general commercial with proffered conditions. The applicant is requesting that approximately thirty-eight point oh-nine acres be rezoned to village residential planned development districts to accommodate a maximum of seventy-nine age-restricted homes. Approximately five point oh-six acres will be rezoned to CC with proffered conditions to accommodate commercial development. The properties are located on the north side of US Route sixty, Anderson Highway, at its intersection with State Route one-one-zero-one, which is Holly Hills Road. The properties also extend northward to State Route six-seventy-five, which is Page Road, at its intersection with State Route one-one-one-zero, which is Old Powhatan Estates. So again, the applicant's proposing up to seventy-nine age-restricted dwelling units, which amounts to a density of two point zero-seven dwelling units per acre. Proffered conditions associated with the proposed VR zoning district address adherence to a master plan, maximum residential densities, perimeter buffers, stormwater management, transportation improvements, the provision of age-restricted units and cash proffers. The portion of the project that is requested to be zoned to CC includes proffers that address building materials, parking lot surface seam, and shared access. The twenty-nineteen Long Range Comprehensive Plan designates the subject properties as village residential and commerce center on the future land use map. It's located within one of the three growth areas in Powhatan County, the Route sixty east corridor. As part of this request, the applicant is also requesting a waiver from the local intersection spacing requirement set forth in Section sixty-eight-dash-one-seventy-five-E-five-D of the subdivision ordinance. At this particular location, the minimum spacing requirement is six hundred and twenty-five feet. And the applicant is requesting a new entrance be constructed approximately two hundred and forty-five feet west of an existing entrance. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at several meetings and held several public hearings. At its meeting on March third, two thousand and twenty, the Planning Commission recommended an hour with a vote of five to zero. The applicant's representative, Natalie Croft, has a presentation that she would like to share with you all today.
I'm going to go ahead and allow the presentation. I want you to hold your questions because we're going to have the public hearing, okay? But I want the public to be able to see the presentation, and then we will have the public hearing, and then I will ask board members for comments, questions of the applicant and Mr. Pompey. Welcome.
Good evening. I will try to do this with my mask on. If it gets too difficult to hear me or understand me, please let me know, and I'll try to do better. Thank you. Thank you again. Good evening. My name is Natalie Croft. I am Eagle's Director of Land Planning here on behalf of the applicant. Over the past year, our team has been working diligently to refine our proposal. And I'm pleased to bring you our application for a seventy-nine home age-restricted community before you this evening. Team members with me tonight are Brian Mitchell from Townsite Engineering, Eric Strohacker with Greenlight Solutions, and Greg Garrison, also with Eagle. You may know Eagle through our new homes in Powhatan County's Founder's Bridge neighborhood. But I'd like to give you a glimpse into what really sets Eagle apart. As one of the region's most trusted builders since nineteen eighty-four, with a hundred and thirty-five communities and over seven thousand homes built in Virginia, Eagle has made a commitment to people, our customers, the community, stakeholders, and our team. What you might not know about Eagle is that we are in a very unique position as a home builder. In August of two thousand and thirteen, we were acquired by Markel, an international insurance holding company on the Fortune five hundred list. We are not reliant on lenders and banks. And as such, as a subsidiary of Markel, when we make a commitment to a community, we are going to see that commitment through. Our age-targeted and age-restricted communities make up a large percentage of our business and have really become the sweet spot for the Eagle brand. The majority of our home buyers are empty nesters. We know this market segment. We have been very intentional in designing homes and communities to fit their lifestyle. Our homes feature open concept floor plans with first-floor master suites and one-level living, essentially self-selecting the active adult demographic. The comprehensive plan describes the vision for Powhatan County as a place where people can see the stars at night, be in touch with the land, and would be able to work, live, play, shop, and learn without leaving the county. It states that by designating areas appropriate for growth and other areas for rural preservation, the plan helps preserve the county's rural character. The vision continues that the dominant rural character will be supplemented by a mix of residential and business uses situated at defined locations, one of them being the Route sixty corridor. These mixed-use clusters will also provide diverse housing options to complement the single-family uses that will continue to be prevalent in rural areas. The location of our proposal is in one of the areas recommended for village residential development, located in the eastern portion of the county, between Page Road and Anderson Highway. Village Residential recommends thoughtful design to provide a variety of housing options, walkable neighborhoods, and integrated parks, which are compatible with the residential qualities of the neighborhood. This clear guidance from the comprehensive plan, as well as feedback from the community and staff during the early stages of this project, have really shaped the evolution of our application and what we have brought forward this evening. The community's complaint notes that there are limited options available for low-maintenance housing on smaller lots. And as you've heard earlier this evening, the county's population is changing and will change over the next twenty years. Powhatan residents wanting to downsize their homes or properties and the maintenance burden they require, but really wanting to remain in Powhatan, is who we have designed this for. Evoking a traditional neighborhood character with a variety of home and lot sizes, the community would have no more than seventy-nine age-restricted, single-family homes within two distinct districts, the Village and the Park. And it would have two separate neighborhood parks, the Village Green and Donnelly Park and Preserve. Decorative streetlights. Decorative streetlights, sign, street signs, street furniture would all serve to create a cohesive theme and sense of place between all areas of the neighborhood. Three stubble connections are also provided to adjacent parcels in order to allow for cohesive development in the future. The heart of the community is the Village District, centered around the county's new Major Fairway Road connecting Route sixty to Page Road. And enlivened by the Village Green, this district contains the smallest of the home and lot sizes, and most of the homes in the Village will have rear-loaded garages through private alleys. While the grided street layout enhances the traditional neighborhood design, the main roadway is designed with a landscaped median and sidewalks on both sides to encourage both pedestrian activity and slower vehicular speeds. The Park District is designed with the Donnelly Park and Preserve at its core. The streets take on a more curvilinear design, meandering through the property's natural topography and environmentally sensitive lands. The home sites in the park are wider to allow for a more varied streetscape and are built to address the sloping topography as it falls toward the pond. Donnelly Creek has been designed with large pockets of meaningful urban space throughout the neighborhood. Donnelly Park and Preserve is centrally located and features a combination of active and passive recreation, as well as areas designated for environmental conservation. The neighborhood's stormwater management facility would be located here as a large pond with fountain and walking trails around the perimeter. The Village Green will be lined with shade trees and will serve as a gathering space for neighborhood parties or casual afternoon picnics, with social distancing, of course. Lastly, the one hundred and twenty-five-foot Page Road buffer, which will preserve the existing vegetation, serves to ease a transition from Donnelly Creek to the lower-density residential development across Page Road. Highlighting the following proffers have been submitted. Again, the one hundred and twenty-five-foot natural buffer along Page Roads and a basic buffer A wherever Donnelly Creek blocks existing residential lots. The age restriction. During our community meetings, it was very apparent that the schools, Palatana County takes great pride in its schools, community members do, and I was concerned that our proposed neighborhood could create a burden on these schools. Hearing that, this sentiment, coupled with the compliance commentary, and as you heard tonight, regarding the lack of housing options for the aging population, is what really drove us to submit an age restriction on this property. Transportation improvements. So we've proffered all the transportation improvements recommended in our traffic impact analysis, which include lengthening the turn lanes into the site from Route sixty. Construction traffic was also a concern brought up by the residents at our community meetings. So we are making a commitment to restrict our construction traffic to the site. Primary construction entrance will be from Route sixty. Proffers related to the five-acre commercial parcel have also been submitted. Exterior materials and parking lot surfacing proffers provide stricter requirements than the requested zoning district. Access to adjacent parcels has also been proffered to ensure future connectivity. And while specific users have not yet been identified for this parcel, we believe that by improving the access with a full medium crossover and providing a concentration of homes, the demand and opportunity for high-quality commercial establishments will be greatly increased. So Eagle is a company built on four core values: passion, respect, accountability, and commitment. We believe in being good neighbors, in paying our fair share, and in not creating a burden on others. To determine our cash proffer contribution, we analyzed the county's adopted five-year capital improvement program. For each project in the CIP that increases the capacity of services, we calculated Donnelly Creek's share by using the percentage of county residents that would reside within our neighborhood. While we are proffering an age restriction, we are still offering a cash proffer towards schools, which the county may, at its sole discretion, use to fund the transportation improvements instead. VDOT has commissioned a study which has been drafted with six recommended improvements to Route sixty within four miles of our property. The county can choose to use a school proffer of almost seventy thousand dollars towards funding any of these improvements or any other traffic-related improvements they desire. The total cash proffer amount would equal almost two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. For our fiscal impact analysis, we analyzed the impact Donnelly Creek would have in order to make sure that the neighborhood wouldn't be a burden on the county. Our fiscal impact analysis uses information from the county's adopted FY twenty twenty budget. We looked at the county's total non-school expenditures, because Donnelly Creek is an age, would be an age-restricted community. We also looked at the total tax revenue, both personal property and real estate, that would be generated by the neighborhood. We used an average assessed value of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and an average personal property value of twenty thousand dollars per household. Each home in Donnelly Creek would bring in more tax revenue than it would cost the county to provide the home and its residents with services, providing a nearly thirty thousand dollar boost to the Palatana County per year in tax revenue, not to mention the boost to Palatana's businesses that the neighborhood's residents would support. One-time fees of just over one million dollars would also be brought into the county. This revenue is in addition to the cash proffer revenue noted on the previous slide. In closing, again, I hope you can see why I'm so excited about this project's potential. We really took our keys from the comprehensive plan, from the community, and from staff, and I believe the plan is better for it. I would respectfully request your approval this evening. I'll be happy to address any questions you may have. Eric Strohacker and Brian Mitchell are here to address any traffic or engineering-related concerns as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing and hear from the public. Then after we have the public hearing on this project, I will open up the board members for questions for the applicant and for Mr. Pompey. Please give your name, your address. We will allow you three minutes. If you represent a group, we will allow you five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, lady and gentleman of the board. I'm Lemmy Jones at twenty-seven twenty-nine G T S A Road, living in the county since nineteen seventy-seven, but my husband's been here always liked just about. I'm speaking to express my opinion on the zoning for the Markel Eagle Construction Project. First, I wish to say that I hope you will respect my opinion and feel free to contact me if I'm wrong on any, correct me if I'm wrong on any particular point. Also, I hope to clear up misunderstandings about this project that I've heard throughout the county. I understand, there is, totally understand, there is a feeling in Palatana in slowing residential growth, to keep it rural. But I think smart residential growth makes sense, and this project seems to fit that. It's very interesting how village growth of this type continues in the courthouse area, but nowhere else. What is that about? I question why lots continue to be developed there, but the same kind of project doesn't seem to be able to go elsewhere in the county without problems. I, for one, would hope there's a, there's somewhere for me to move when I'm ready to downsize from Air Farm, other than the two choices that currently exist. I'm just all about choice. For some who've never lived west of Flat Rock, I prefer the eastern end of the county without being in Midlothian, which is where I feel Founder's Bridge is more about. This project is consistent, in my understanding, with the comprehensive plan. I'm in favor of designing for the following reasons. As an age-restricted fifty-five-plus neighborhood, it would not be a drain or expense on the schools. The location is approximately two miles west of Chesterfield County line, and the main entrance for the neighborhood would be Route sixty. It's not likely that Page Road would see significant traffic due to the ability to go directly to Route sixty. Also, due to the neighborhood's demographics, the homeowners are not likely to be commuting, traveling during high-traffic times. In contrast, there are over a hundred or so lots in the courthouse area on a narrow two-lane road, and I don't believe there's been a traffic problem. So I don't see how it would be on a highway as Route sixty. Homes would likely be in the three hundred and fifty thousand-plus range, I know she said three thirty, but we all know how that goes, produce proffers for each house built, plus additional taxes for the county on the seventy-nine homes, and they gave you what that would be when the project is completed. The neighborhood sits back off of Route sixty and has buffers to shield it from other properties. There are two parks for the homeowners to enjoy within their neighborhood. Utilities are covered, from what I could determine. Litter will be public, and according to the Palatana website, Palatana has contracted with Chesterfield County to purchase up to five hundred and seventy-two thousands a gallon per day. Twenty nineteen, according to that, they used about two hundred, and I think it's interesting that they currently purchased two hundred and three gallons a day, but that they're flushing a hundred and sixty-five gallons away. Don't really understand that. Also, I know that the sewer connections are high. I'm not going too long.
You're over your three minutes. Yeah, we can please wrap it up.
Yes, I will wrap it up with saying that we need options. Right now, there are two places in the county. There's Scottville, Aaron Hill, and then Founder's Bridge. As a citizen who this county is very involved in this county, in various organizations and charities, I really feel like I would like an option. And if I'm down in Midlothian, I'm gonna be more involved in Midlothian. If I'm up here, I will be involved, but I don't like just having one option. So, thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions, and sorry I couldn't finish my approach.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike Hall. I live at seventeen forty-six Old Palatana Estates. And I can say, well, here we are again, another project on Page Road. It was just last year that the board voted down the Ellis Property, project to the bottom of Page Road, which was a high-density proposed project. Of course, it was voted down because there was many issues that were cited, such as traffic, water usage, the drain on our resources, and obviously, the most, the biggest issue was the majority of our citizens came out against that project. Well, then comes this project, where the planning commission previously vetted this in depth, and they heard from the developer on numerous occasions, as well as the people that live nearby, myself included, as a homeowner that lives directly across from the proposed entranceway at Page Road in Old Palatana Estates. They found that this project did not conform to the county's standards set up in the master plan, and pointed out the developer was unable to answer the questions on how the commercial section on the property was to be used. Amongst other, amongst that and other reasons, they unanimously voted it down. So Village Residential was conceptualized to mirror something like Scottville in the Village, where homes are close-knit, smaller in size, smaller properties that are managed by an HOA, a place with sidewalks that allow families to go shopping or dining. That works in the Village of Palatana, since there's already existing sidewalks, and there are businesses easily close by to walk around. And Scottsville is a location that that works fine. And there were no roadway changes that were required. I don't mean to tell you that Page Road is nothing like the Village. There are no sidewalks. There's no shopping or dining in close-walking distance. The existing homes on Page Road are not close-knit, and Page Road is a rural residential, and we bought our homes there just for that reason. And that's how we want it to remain. As mentioned in Markel's presentation, that they want to follow the traditional neighborhood character, I would certainly propose that the Donnelly Estate project is not, does not fit that with the existing Page Road. I'm not against development, and I'm not against homeowners being able to, property owners being able to sell property to make, make money. But if they would consider changing this development to be single homes, to be, to match what's existing at Page Road, I would have no problem with that at all. Please vote against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Kitty Osborne. I live at one oh seven one Dorset Road. My question is about the size of the pond, how big, how much water, it's gonna be natural water, because I'm watering cattle at eleven oh one Dorset Road off of a natural-fed spring pond that was built years ago, and as Larry Norby knows, there's already water issues in District Two. So I'm just, I don't know how big a pond is gonna be built. Is it already there? Is the body of water already there? Or is it a pond? Who can, I mean, I can't ask a question, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
We'll, we'll work that into our discussions for you.
Okay. I hate for you to have to bring water to my cattle every day.
Hello, Lemmy Lane Hall, seventeen forty-six Old Palatana Estates.
Welcome.
First and foremost, high-density development does not belong on Page Road. The developer is making no improvements to Page Road, but there will most definitely be an increase in traffic from residents, service vehicles, and cut-through traffic. The age restriction of the proposed development doesn't burden our schools, but it does burden, it does increase the burden on our fire and rescue sheriff road maintenance. It will also be a draw on our very limited public water, which was intended for commercial use only. And last week's water restrictions caused by the floods highlight the limitations of our purchased public water. According to the VDOT report, Holly Hills and Route sixty will be, quote-unquote, "operating at unacceptable levels for southbound and northbound movements." The residents of Holly Hills are already challenged exiting and entering their neighborhood, and this will make it so much worse for them. It's also stated that Donnelly Creek will negatively impact the level of services for adjacent roads. And the idea of extending turn lane storage sounds to me like a very dangerous proposal on Route sixty. The proposed commerce center of five point six acres is a far cry from Palatana County's required thirty acres. This is certainly not large enough to justify usage of our public water and sewer. Never mind the fact that there's countless empty commercial and retail sites along Route sixty currently, and it's increasing every day because of the continued decline in our retail businesses. I respectfully ask the board to follow the lead of the planning commission and to deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, do we have anybody wishing to join us remote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have phone number ending in five seven one five, as raise your hand.
Welcome.
I think you're still on mute, five seven one five. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board of Supervisors, neighbors and citizens of Palatana. My name is Debbie Weir, and for over forty-two years, my husband and I have lived at fifteen oh one Page Road. I have several questions and concerns about the Donnelly Creek develop. The applicant indicates that this development is targeting senior living. This will mean that our fire EMS infrastructure will need to be expanded. In this plan, is this plan truly about senior living? The Donnelly Creek Master Plan and Development Guide mentions that, quote, "The Village Green would be a place to host block parties, pick-up soccer games, and impromptu afternoon picnics." Who will be maintaining the three-quarter acres of Village Green and the mentioned alleyways behind these homes? The plan states the Park District, quote, "The Park District is designed with the plus-minus seven-acre Donnelly Park and Preserve at its core." Who is going to maintain Donnelly Park, an expensive HOA, or the county taxpayers? This is another high-density development that wants to use the county's water resources for residential rather than their intended commercial uses. As you all are well aware, this is against the county's original usage plan for purchasing water from Chesterfield. With all the new commercial and residential development in the Midlothian area, it's only a matter of time before Chesterfield either raises water rates, limits our capacity, or just plain cuts us off. We need to continue, excuse me, we need to continue to look for ways to be self-sufficient as a county and not depend on Chesterfield for our water supply, especially for residential development. development. The applicant indicates that the construction traffic will be used in Route sixty. How is that going to be enforced? Construction traffic will go the route of least resistance, Luckstone Road and Carter-Gallier Boulevard to Page Road. They will choose Page Road, an A intersection, over Route sixty Holly Hills, an F intersection any day of the week. The applicant indicates that the county wants to establish a connector road in this area. We already have a connector road with Carter-Gallier Boulevard. How many connector roads do we need feeding into Page Road from Route sixty? With the F rating of Route sixty Holly Hills intersection, the occupants in this new development are primarily going to use Page Road, not Route sixty, to go east and west. I don't see the new road in Donleye Creek as a useful connector road at all. The applicant is also asking for spacing standards waiver. Powhatan set these standards for traffic safety reasons, and they should be adhered to. Developers keep insisting that they are following what the county wants in our comprehensive plan. I was very encouraged by last Monday's Board of Supervisors workshop with the board's decision to tweak, amend the current future land use map and the major thoroughfare plan to reflect what the county and citizens really want and need. Instead of constantly paying infrastructure catch-up, we need to always be thinking about our current road and water infrastructure and upgrade them ahead of any additional commercial and residential development. Everyone that moves to Powhatan comes here to get away from high-density development and urban sprawl.
You've exceeded your three minutes, so would you please?
I just have one, I have one sentence?
Yes, ma'am, please finish.
Please keep Powhatan rural and vote no to the Donleye Creek development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we also have Claudia Farr. Ms. Farr has been on the line for waiting to speak.
Welcome. Welcome.
She's on mute.
Ms. Farr, your phone, your line's back on mute.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Welcome.
You're back on mute, Ms. Farr. Ms. Farr, you're still on mute. Thank you.
Okay, okay. I'm so sorry for that. Again, let me start. My name is Claudia Farr. My address is forty-one fifty Maiden's Road in Powhatan. I've lived in Powhatan nearly all of my adult years, and I strongly support, and thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to comment on my support for programs for seniors in the county, and particularly the proposal for...
This is not the public comment period you want. What you want is at the end of the meeting, is when we have our second public comment. This, these comments tonight are related, right now, related to the public hearing that we're having on the project.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I heard my name, and I came running.
We're going to be getting to that second public comment period pretty quick, and we would love to hear from you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, Mr. Chairman, we have two comments on our website, both in opposition to the project, and have asked that their comments be recorded as part of the minutes.
Okay, do we have anybody else that wants to comment during this public hearing? If not, I will close the public comment period. Mr. Pompey, would you come back up?
Mr. Chairman, I have a real quick question.
Please, Mr. Norvett.
And this is for Ned. Are those two comments that you said on the website, would that be Linwood and Jim? Is that the same two?
Yes, yes, Mr. Norvett.
Okay, thank you.
Questions from Mr. Pompey.
I don't have a question necessarily for Mr. Pompey, but I do, they're traffic engineer. Could we have him come up?
You can have anybody come up from staff or from the applicant.
Good evening, my name is Eric Strohacker, traffic engineer, Greenlight Solutions.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Can you give a little recap of the traffic impact analysis that you've done and how you came to the conclusions that, of the proposed improvements?
So, for this particular site, the county was recommending that a traffic study be done, so we sat down, scoped a traffic study with both county staff and VDOT staff. The typical study, we did all the typical analysis elements for a traffic study. We studied existing traffic conditions, a future projected traffic condition without the site, and then a build-out condition with the site. Those traffic numbers are grown to a projected build-out year for the site. We also take the time to add in the approved development traffic numbers, like classic, classic granite, for instance, is one of them. I think also at the Stone Ridge commercial area, there were some approved development there. Per the study, per the scoping meeting, we decided to study the intersection of US sixty Holly Hills, which is going to essentially function as a side drive for the site and the commercial development, as well as the intersection at Page Road and the side drive in Old Powhatan Estates. So, going through that analysis, after developing the traffic numbers for build-out conditions, we determined that no turn lanes are warranted at the Page Road side drive. The operational conditions were acceptable. The intersection at US sixty, at the existing crossover for Holly Hills Road, what we're seeing there is that you can get the primary movements at the intersection to work, which are the US sixty movements, the left end, the right end. You can get the right out to work, but any left turn, any through movement fails. It's just simply over capacity for those particular movements during the peak hours of the day. That would also hold true for the Holly Hills approach, which is essentially, let me back up a little bit here, the exiting lanes from the side, the south, what we call the southbound approach, would assume a left-through lane and then an exclusive right-turn lane. So that was analyzed under those conditions. The Holly Hills approach is essentially a shared left-through-right lane. Any left, any throughs essentially back up, the whole works, and so that lane will operate at unacceptable levels of service today and in the future.
So, it's operating at an unacceptable level today?
Yes.
And? And in the future, so?
Yes.
This development?
This development will impact that movement further than it is today, if, if that's what you're...
Okay, so that's going to affect it?
There's certainly an impact to that approach.
Okay. Now, what could we do to mitigate that?
Well, to mitigate the left and through movements, you've got to get probably pretty creative, in the sense of some sort of atypical intersection control. It's not going to meet warrants for traffic signal with the existing volumes and future volumes. There's just not simply, there's just simply not enough side-street volume to meet the warrant. Probably what's more than likely going to be necessary, and I think, based on current studies going on on the US sixty corridor, they're, they're starting to look at alternative intersection designs that would essentially restrict certain movements, but then...
Right.
...allow them to progress down the, the main line for a U-terminator or something along those lines. There's lots of different methods that's being proposed these days. It's probably going to take something like that to mitigate that left and through movement. The Holly Hills approach, in a, in a more straightforward approach, you could mitigate right turn, what I call northbound right turn movements, off of Holly Hills onto US sixty, headed east towards Chesterfield, by providing a side-street left, a right-turn lane, getting the right turn movement out of the existing lane today, which is a shared lane. That would help that right turn movement, but it does nothing for the left and through, essentially.
Would the applicant consider putting in that right turn lane to Holly Hills?
That's above my pay grade at this point in time. I think at this point in time, I'd have to let the developer answer that question, if that's okay.
Okay. Yes, would be happy to.
Ms. Carmack, can I ask him some more questions before we get to answering your question from the applicant, since he's up here? The left and through movements are at level of service what?
Level of service F.
Okay, explain to the audience what that means. We have level of service, which refers to the level of comfort of the driver, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and F is what, a state of failure?
It is a state of failure.
So that's the lowest that you can get, correct?
It is correct.
So, when you say, well, it's at F today, but we're going to add more traffic, so you said it's going to get worse, it's not going to get better?
That, that's correct.
So they don't, they don't have a G to go to.
And, and...
Once you hit F, you're at F.
You're, yeah, there's just no other gradation in terms of the level of service. There's a delay measure in terms of seconds per vehicle that would, that would worsen, but still maintain level of service F.
Well, the, the delay, I had a traffic engineering class from VDOT, and the instructor, you know, did an interesting exercise for the class. He said, I've got a stopwatch. He says, raise your hand when you get antsy and you feel like you want to go out into traffic, you know, you're tired of waiting. And it's interesting, that's what happens, people get tired of waiting, that's when they take chances.
That's certainly a concern.
Yeah.
Mr., oh, sorry.
Let me just finish. Do you have something you could put up for the site entrances? I believe you've got two that you're showing. I couldn't tell from the information provided in our packet, get the specificity of what I'm looking for, for the entrance in and the exit out on the north side, and then Holly Hills, you know, the crossover there. Do you have something that you could put up that gives me?
No, do we have any diagrams or any plans that would show detailed, Brian, is Brian here? Oh, Brian, you got anything? Sounds like we don't have anything to, from an illustrative standpoint. So, you know, I think, I think he's looking for something with a little bit more detail on the site.
What I'm looking for is the entrance that goes through the existing commercial use and maps into the road that you're going to use as the entrance going north into your development. I want to see how that works, because I have questions about the ingress and egress, okay? And how that works. So, it would have been, be helpful if I could have it up on screen, where I could ask my questions and have this gentleman respond.
We've recommended, I can tell you what we've recommended, which is a three-lane cross-section at the Holly Hills drop. So you'll have one lane in, heading into the site, it's a three-lane, and then two lanes heading out.
Okay, I think you've got a picture in the packet, do you not? Andrew, where it shows, it's a photo stat, and it shows the existing commercial use and the road coming in off of sixty. It's in the packet. I couldn't get the specificity that I wanted. Let me see if I can get the page for you.
We don't have a detailed schematic of the intersection.
Yeah, this is the page Mr. Cox has got right here, if I might. If you could put this up, this one here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's going to be about two fourteen or fifteen.
So, so that's actually a rendering that one of our citizens put together, showing what he would like to happen.
Oh.
He's a concerned, concerned citizen.
Because I, I couldn't understand, it didn't match with what the narrative was.
Yeah, that's a citizen of Holly Hills wants, that's what he wants it to look like. Okay, so that doesn't work.
It doesn't work, okay. All right, so we're back to, we have an entrance that's existing now, going into the shopping center. So if I'm going east, I mean, going west, I will turn into that entrance, right? And then I will go through the parking lot and connect to the entrance that will be created off of Route sixty going north, that's aligning with Holly Hills, is that correct?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat that again?
I will. You have two entrances that we're going to be using on the north side, or, excuse me, two entrance and an exit. The entrance is going to be, if you're going westbound, you're going to turn in at the shopping center, that mall that is there now, correct?
So, are you talking about at Holly Hills, the entrance at Holly Hills?
No, I'm talking about, how am I going to get into your project off of Route sixty going west?
So if I'm headed westbound?
On Route sixty, how do I get in and how do I get out?
You can make a right turn into the site.
Where do I make the right turn?
At the side drive.
Mr. Pompey?
So, you would make the right turn, that there's an existing right turn lane into the existing shopping center? That turn lane would be extended, and you would enter the site directly across from Holly Hills Road. And the applicant has proposed that existing entrance to the shopping center being right-in only.
Okay, so you really only got one way in, and that, okay, that was confusing to me. So I'm glad, glad we got that cleared up. So you will extend this turn lane, and it'll go all the way from, you'll use the existing lane, and you'll increase it going to the west to go into the new entrance, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
It'll be about a four hundred and thirty-some, I think.
Progress.
Turn lane.
Okay. Feeling better, okay? So, that's a right in and right out, and so full entrance is basically what you're saying.
It'll be the, 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 the new entrance, the new, not the existing point of access.
All right, but the new entrance will be a full.
Entrance will be a right in, a left in, right out, left out. Full movement.
Full movement.
Full movement.
Okay. All right, that's helpful. Okay, thank you, Ms. Carmack.
While you're up here, level of service at an F right now, is that peak hours or all the time?
That's peak hour.
Okay, explain that.
So, the traffic study typically focuses on the peak hours of the day, which essentially the roadways are most heavily used. We want to analyze the condition under what would essentially be a worst-case traffic condition for any particular development or intersection. The AM peak hours typically sometime between seven and nine in the morning. The PM peak hours typically between four and six PM. So we go out there, we count two-hour blocks around those times a day. From an analytical standpoint, we pull out the worst hour within that two-hour count. And then even from an analytical standpoint, we break that hour into fifteen increments, fifteen-minute increments, and we use what's called the peak fifteen minutes as a way to factor the traffic and, and conditions even more so, so that what we're essentially determining is what's that condition under that worst fifteen minute during that peak hour of the day. And so, in, in addition to that, when we look at traffic queues, we're looking at the ninety-fifth percentile of traffic queue, meaning that any queuing you would see during that, that peak fifteen-minute peak hour of the day, ninety-five percent of them would be less than that what would be measured. So only five percent of the queues would exceed that worst queue.
So it's the worst-case scenario?
It's the worst-case scenario.
With, and what is, what is it the rest of the time?
As far as levels of service?
Yes.
I honestly can't tell you, we didn't analyze that.
Okay, because you only do peak hours.
We don't have a number, I'd be guessing at that. It's my experience that, you know, during the off AM time between the PM, between the peak hour of the AM and that lunchtime period, you get a fairly decent lowering of traffic and probably your better operating conditions of the day. Some sites may be a little bit different, but in this one, I would say, it's probably functioning pretty well. And then you get another afternoon.
The other peak.
Yeah. Now, if you've got schools in session, that can sometimes be impacted in that period of time, because schools typically let out prior to the four to six, but after lunchtime. So, you get that sometimes a little bit of an impact in there.
In your experience, have you found what it with an age-restricted development?
Well, let me, let me add to your question, Ms. Carmack. If the applicant would please stay, come back up, you know, the question Ms. Carmack's going to have is about age restriction, that question needs to be answered. What form of age restriction are y'all proposing? What form of age restriction are y'all proposing?
Thank you for your question. We're proposing the fifty-five plus of age restriction per the Fair Housing Act.
Okay, does that mean everybody has to be fifty-five plus?
So that means that eighty percent of the homes have to have one resident fifty-five or older. That's the definition, that's one of the definitions provided in the state code.
Okay. So what happens on resale? Who's in charge of enforcing that age restriction once y'all turn it over to the homeowners association?
Typically, it would be the HLA.
Okay, but that's something they have to keep up themselves and enforce if they want to keep the eighty percent.
Yes, sir.
At fifty-five. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could, could I ask one question, Mr. Chairman, along that same line?
Please, Mr. Cox.
In terms of age restricted, it is the person who is there, not necessarily the person who owns it, is that correct?
Um, that is, I'm not sure of that legal, legal definition.
The reason I ask that is because we have an age-restricted facility here in Scottville, and, uh, we have, um, a number of units where, uh, the youngsters, the forties and fifties have purchased homes for their parents. And so the legal owner, uh, is less than the age-restricted, but it is occupied.
Right.
Okay, and so it just, it starts to get complicated, I guess is what I'm saying. Thank you, thank you.
Sure, sure, and I do think that it says occupied by, um, the person fifty-five or older.
It does, it says occupied in state code. So if, 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 um, since, uh, I am a senior, okay, since I'm seventy-three, and my, uh, son decided I can't live on my farm and he wanted to live there, with our two grandchildren and we could make that work, that would be permissible, correct?
You'd have to have at least one person in the home living there that's fifty-five or older.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Carmack, did you finish your question?
Um, I, well, I, it was asking you about the peak hours and the age, uh, restricted.
So, uh, you wanna know what the volumes that we were anticipating from a traffic standpoint?
Exactly. Did you, do you find that with an age-restricted development, they are traveling at peak hours?
Yes, there, there, it's not that there's no traveling, um, kinda, and kinda hitting on that. When we did the traffic study, it's important to understand, at that time, we were assuming standard, single-family dwelling units, not age-restricted with the commercial. Uh, when they backed off and said, "Okay, let's look at the age-restricted," they actually asked me to say, "Okay, well, what would be the compare?" We didn't change the traffic study, but they wanted to understand what kind of reduction, what percent reduction would you get in, uh, generation of traffic? I think in the AM peak hour, we determined you'd get about an eleven percent reduction,
mm-hmm.
total, total site traffic. Uh, in the PM, nineteen percent, uh, reduction, uh, percent reduction. And then the daily would be about a fifteen percent reduction. So you, so that, I think that's actually a good way to answer your question in terms of, you, you do have it, it's just there is a little bit, it, it's, you know, anywhere from ten to twenty percent less, depending on the time of day you're looking at in terms of what's being generated by age-restricted.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, I have a quick comment I would like to make on that as well. Because I'm fifty-five years old, that doesn't mean that I won't be working. Because, you know, I look around today and there are plenty of people working at fifty-five. In fact, I would almost bet there's more working than not working. That's just a comment. Mr. Byler did, I preempt you from a question.
That's quite all right, Mr. Chairman. May I?
Please.
Thank you. Um, can you define the peak hour specifically? Is it, um, six AM to seven-thirty?
I can, I can dig it out if you wanna get it, if you want me to tell you. I gotta, I gotta get it out of the study. Just give me a second.
It's from seven to nine and four to six.
So the counts were seven to nine, four to six, but I think you're asking, what is the specific hour within those two time slots, correct?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Just give me one second here. You know, I apologize, I thought I had the existing counts in this appendix and I just don't have them. That would've outlined the actual hours for the peak hour. But I am certain it didn't start at seven, uh, didn't start at four. I rarely see a thing start at four. It's probably a five to six in the PM. Uh, and then you're probably looking more like a seven-thirty to eight-thirty in the AM, maybe seven-fifteen.
And that's when this intersection-
Is that it's-
Scales heavily traveled. Scores at a F.
Yes.
Yes. So let me ask you this. I'm new up here.
Yes, sir.
But I've seen you at these meetings before, um, and you apparently are, uh, someone that a lot of developers used in regards to doing traffic impact analysis.
Yes, sir.
You're pretty familiar with Route sixty East Corridor?
Uh, yes, sir.
You're very familiar with it?
Yes, I've counted many hours out there.
How many intersections in that corridor rate an F?
So there's different ways to grade an intersection depending on the type of control.
Mm-hmm.
So if you have a signalized control, you can actually get an overall intersection levels of service.
Well, we're not talking about signalized.
And, and I just wanna be sure you understand, so when we're talking about an unsignalized movement, we, we really can only focus on the individual movements and typically the side streets are where it struggles. I know of no unsignalized intersection on US sixty between Stave Mill and Shesfield County line that functions at acceptable level, acceptable levels of service.
So every one of them?
I would anticipate, and I can't say that I've counted every one of them.
Yes.
But they're all under the same condition, which US sixty and that segment of road is carrying a significant amount of through traffic. And that enough, and that in of itself is what precludes anything from working at an acceptable level of service. It's just too much traffic.
And my memory of what I've seen in the past, um, to the project that I won't mention the name, but from last year, you know, the, you referenced it, that I, I think if I understood you right, any intersection change that we're likely to see in Powhatan in the future is most likely gonna be an innovative intersection change, which means not a signalized intersection. It will mean that there will be an R-cut or a T, green T, uh, type of intersection there.
You, you won't get a standard signalized intersection. The, some of these innovative designs could have a signal component to it. But, um, but the standard, like you see at Stave Mill today, for instance, Stave Mill, US sixty, that, that's what they're trying to get away from.
Right.
Uh, for these, in this particular corridor, more so. It's a, it's on a preservation, a tour preservation, uh, list. And so they're gonna give it a little, a lot of extra attention on any kind of recommended, recommendation for change of control or design.
All of our intersections-
Yes.
Have a side road fail during peak hours?
Well, I would say yes, that would be my-
The majority of them.
Yes.
That way we'll take a look at all.
Once you get past Stave Mill, I, I would say it's a little different. Stave Mill's key in that, in that assumption that I'm giving you here, okay? Stave Mill carries a, a significant amount of traffic on and off, and primarily everything's headed back towards Chesterfield, which I think everybody who lives here would understand that.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Byler. Any more questions for this gentleman?
Uh-
Not for this gentleman?
No, I don't, but I have one for Natalie.
Mrs. Carmack?
Hey, let's talk real quick about the Holly Hills, um, entrance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that something that you all would consider? Putting a turn lane in over at Holly Hills to alleviate some of the congestion there during peak hours?
Um, that's good feedback and it is something that we definitely consider. I can't guarantee anything right now, not knowing how much right-of-way there is, what it would take to actually get the right-of-way to construct it, um, the engineering to construct it. But it is something that we can take a look at.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I have a question, follow-up question. Going back to the, um, diagram, that's not a diagram of what the ingress and egress looks like.
Mm-hmm.
Does the entrance going into development going westbound, does that right aid have a merge lane coming into Route sixty?
Currently, it is not proposed with an acceleration lane. It was not warranted in the traffic study that Mr. Showhacker did. Um, if he could speak a little bit more to that?
No, you've answered my question, but, you know, I know those things are helpful. You know, just like, you know, the turn lanes going in, having merge lanes going out, particularly on R2O roads like Route sixty.
Okay.
I didn't know if that was something Mrs. Carmack wanted to consider as well, or?
Hmm, yeah.
Well, while we're looking at the Holly Hills, um, piece, we can also see if that could be a feasible option for an acceleration lane on Westbound sixty exiting our site. Again, that's not something I know right off the top of my head today, um, but it's certainly something we can look at.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for the applicant's representative, Mr. Byler? Do you have some?
Um-
Mr. Cox?
I have some, but we've been talking a bunch up here, maybe Mr. Nordberg has something.
We can still see-
Thank, thank you for wanting to give up. I'm, I'm listening hard and a lot of my questions have already been addressed, so, you know, I, I yield back, go ahead and ask away.
Mr. Byler wanted, uh, go ahead. Mr. Chairman? Thanks. Um, being we're talking about D cell, turn lanes, acceleration lanes, on the eastbound Route sixty,
Mm-hmm.
turning left into your development.
Yes.
That turn lane currently has a hundred foot of storage.
Right.
And you guys, I think, are proffering to go to three hundred and-
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five feet, three hundred and twenty-five feet?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
That was a recommendation from the traffic study, from the traffic impact analysis.
The gentleman who was just up here?
Yes, sir.
I would say his last name, but it's a little beyond me. Um, so go to the westbound Route sixty
Mm-hmm.
and the turn lane south into Holly Hills.
Okay.
That turn lane is exactly the same size, a hundred-foot storage capacity there.
Okay.
At five o'clock in the afternoon, when we have our traffic jam, storage there today is not enough because you have, I'll just put it to you this way. Holly Hills subdivision has one hundred and seventy-two lots.
Okay.
That might be called high-density. That's point seven-two acres. That's the average size of the lots in Holly Hills.
Mm-hmm.
If you have this storage, that's only a hundred feet there and it's backing up, and we need to be able to get these cars across into Holly Hills.
Mm-hmm.
Hundred and seventy-two homes, lots that's been there for quite some time.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna go to like what Ms. Carmack is suggesting. Why is it we didn't look at extending that also, um, like you did the other turn lane?
Sure.
Do you mind if I?
Oh, please.
So, uh, it's a great question. Um, what you gotta remember is with residential uses, like we're proposing, like is existing on Holly Hills, they're leaving in the AM and they're coming home in the PM. It's, it's, it's either, they don't really balance in, in and out, both peak hours. It's, it's one way or the other. Uh, in the PM for Holly Hills, at the exact same time when the westbound sixty is heavy, but the eastbound sixty isn't, that's when they're making that left in. So the conflict for that particular movement you're talking about isn't as severe as what you get with the left turn in for our site. Because during that exact same time of day, we're making the lefts in too, and we're going against that heavy westbound flow. So there's a much greater conflict in terms of what the maneuvers our residents are making versus the residents of the Holly Hills in terms of the traffic numbers. And from an analytical standpoint, this is kinda what I was hitting on earlier, we do a special analysis to understand what that queuing is going to be under future condition or existing condition. And it does push the hundred foot, it's a hundred and thirteen feet that build out. That's the ninety-fifth percentile traffic queue. Um, whereas ours is much worse, uh, which is why we need the three hundred and twenty-five feet of storage. So that was the recommendation, um, we held up because there is some ability to, I think, to queue in the taper. Uh, could it, could it be improved? Certainly. Um, but I, I think that's, again, this is one of those things from a financial standpoint. It's a significant cost for us to go in and, and try to address that as well. Um, and I will caution you also on this, that left in for Holly's Hills, we're really not impacting that movement as directly as we are the lefts out of Holly Hills, if you follow what I'm saying.
I do.
So that, that impact that the site's having is really not specific to that movement, which is again, why we were a little leery of trying to deal with that extra thirteen feet. Does that answer your question?
It does.
I have a question for the applicant.
Sure.
A lady came down to Al previously and she was interested in knowing how big that holding pond that y'all were gonna create was gonna be. Could you respond to that?
Yes, sir. Engineer Brian Mitchell is here with Townsite Engineering and he can talk to, um, how the, how big the pond would be, how it stays in its condition, et cetera.
So hello, my name's Brian Mitchell, Townsite Engineer, and I'll be the civil engineer on the project. Um, you know, the way that we have this set up, um, you know, with state regulations require stormwater management as well as water quality treatment whenever we build anything that's an impervious area. So, uh, we positioned the ponds such that we feel we can capture most all of the drainage, uh, for the site. So essentially, we're gonna put in a stormwater drainage system, uh, curb and gutter, uh, you know, ditches where needed, uh, and then put that into a pipe system and then convey it all to the, uh, to the stormwater management facility. So essentially, that facility is mainly capturing rainwater. Uh, it's holding that rainwater over a period of time and then releasing it. Generally, we try to release it at the pre-development rate. So whatever was draining to that area, that low area in the beginning, uh, we run some calculations, size the pond accordingly, detain that water and then discharge it at what the pre-development rate is. That's our, our normal method, uh, to meet the state, uh, criteria. Um, you know, our, our vision is seeing that pond as a wet pond. Uh, generally, if we can get at least ten acres of, of drainage towards a facility like that, we can keep it wet. Uh, depends on soil conditions as well. Periodically, we have to roll in a clay liner. Uh, in Powhatan, Powhatan, Chesterfield County clay, I don't foresee that having to be something we have to bring in. We should be able to find clay on site.
The, the question is the size.
Uh, yeah, uh, size-wise, um, you know, we sized it just based on experience at this point. At the zoning level, uh, we don't get into the calculations that are required when we do the site plan associated within the construction plans. Uh, the size shown on the screen is based on pure experience.
So that rendering that I'm looking at,
Mm-hmm.
it could be half that size, a quarter of that size, or it could be bigger?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. I mean, but, uh, I mean, generally, a pond on a facility like that takes anywhere from five to ten percent of what the, you know, total site area is as far as just a general size goes.
So what I'm trying to do is get a, a handle on that space and I will talk to the applicant's representative about that, how much of it is actually usable.
I got you.
Okay? Because right now, I have no way of knowing how much of that is actual usable, uh, whether you call it a park or whatever you wanna call it. And so now I'm finding out only, I'm not sure by the size of the pond, so, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Please don't go anywhere.
No problem.
Well, let's go ahead and before we switch off, let Bill ask his questions while we have you up here as the subject matter expert.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Pompey, could you join us too? A stormwater retention pond can be an amenity. If it's an amenity, then it's part of the open space, is that correct?
That's correct. It has certain features. It counts towards open space, a certain percentage of that area.
Okay, so now we have what has to function as a lake, not as a water retention pond, is that correct?
Uh, our intention is to build it to look like a lake, but have it- Our intention is to build it to look like a lake, but have it function as a water retention facility.
Right, but in order to function as an amenity, there has to constantly be enough water in there to run the fountain?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you have no source of water dedicated to keeping that pond full?
Well, we do plan on putting a storm sewer system in that will convey all the drain.
That's to drain it out, and I'm talking about what, what source of water other than runoff do you have to keep, to keep the lake, because now it's a lake, okay, functioning?
We typically put in a stormwater pipes to convey the drainage during rain events to the pond, and then that pond then retains that water. And, yes, in a drought situation, the pond may certainly go down in elevation. I've rarely seen them ever get dry. We, we have had to put in, you know, wells, irrigation wells before, but that's very rare that we've ever had to do that.
Unfortunately, you're talking to a farmer.
I understand.
Okay.
I get it.
Who's very well aware that rain does not come in an equal and measured way.
Yes, sir.
And so, if, so there is no source of water, and so, we could in periods of time have a non-functioning fountain, correct?
If, if the pond gets low enough, certainly.
Okay, and you, and you have no provision for making sure that that water is monitored constantly?
No, sir, the only, no, sir.
Okay, now, let's go to the other side of this. So, we've gotta have a certain amount of water in it to run the fountain.
Yes, sir.
So, that means there has to be enough storage space left to handle the runoff, okay, and not submerge the fountain. So, that's the other side of this thing. How do you make that work?
Yeah, so, so usually, the fountains are floating fountains, floating fountains.
Okay.
You know, I just, I mean, I've probably designed 500 of these ponds over, over the years. So, I'll just talk about them generally.
So, it can, it can handle the water going up, is what you?
That's correct. What we have is we have a permanent water surface. That permanent water surface, generally four to eight feet in elevation depth. So, the pond is generally normal water surface, down to the bottom, four to eight feet in depth. And, and that water volume that we're creating there is to capture and treat the water quality component of the impervious area that runs to that pond. So, there's, there's regulations that we have to meet when designing these ponds such that the volume that we've created as wet pond volume, that's normal water surface, is designed to meet those state criteria based upon the impervious area that runs to it. Once we get that set, then we have to create a storage area up above that. Generally, the storage area, when a rainfall event comes in, we design it to a 10-year storm event, and that water surface rises up from the normal water surface up. Generally, it fluctuates anywhere from, you know, one to four feet in elevation change above that normal water surface event during, you know, a 10-year storm event. That's in generalities. That water then flows out. We usually have a weir, like a concrete weir, that it will flow out over time, and that concrete weir will be designed with a notch in it such that it controls that stormwater event through that, through that outfall facility. In the pond, at that normal water surface elevation, we put a fountain. That fountain is used to aerate and create a nice amenity. Eagle's typical for putting, you know, some type of walking trail around it so that the residents can go out and walk that. We usually build a little pedestrian walkway over top the weir so they can actually make the entire loop around it. So, that's how these, these facilities end up looking on the back end.
But it's dependent upon mother nature to function?
Certainly, it takes water supply, yes, 100% correct.
I have other questions in other areas. I don't know what, where y'all wanna go.
Is there any more questions for this gentleman related to the pond?
I have none.
And I will move on. Now, questions for staff?
Yes?
Mr. Cox?
In your packet, it's page 116. So, Mr. Pompey, the entrance spacing is 245 feet, as I understand it now?
What the new entrance?
The, the, what we have between the two intersections, between the entrance to this and the adjacent parcel is 245 feet.
That's correct.
And we need 625 feet?
That's correct.
Okay, so, they need a waiver for 380 feet?
That's correct.
So, a significant waiver. Now, the adjacent parcel, which is 4273A, is going to be a right in?
That's correct. Right now, the entrance is right in, right out.
Okay, so, when you, when you leave that adjacent commercial facility, you'll then either be able to go to Page Road or back to 60?
That's correct. You would go to the connector.
So, that commercial has the potential for sending traffic to Page Road? Okay, so here's a real question. Since there's interconnectivity between these two parcels, did anybody consider closing the entrance to the existing commercial now to eliminate the need for a waiver?
That could be a possibility, yes.
Has anybody, has the applicant suggested that?
That's been discussed with the applicant. They can answer whether or not that's a.
Right.
Amenable solution.
And they didn't bite?
I don't think the applicant was willing to completely close that entrance.
I'd like then to move to page 118. Water capacity. Your notes on water capacity, about how much is gonna be used is residential only, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, commercial doesn't exist, as far as this is concerned?
Yeah, this focused on the residential piece, since the commercial piece has already been approved.
And this project will have no impact on our need to flush, will it?
Based on discussions with Johnny Miles, our utilities director, it would not reduce the amount of water needs to flush.
I'd like to go to, we'll go to page 126. Curiosity question because of the way in which it's worded. If this were to go forward, the rezoning were to go forward, the commercial parcel, which is 4272, okay, which is currently owned by a number of people, would Eagle Markell own that piece of property?
That's the, the.
The commercial piece?
I think it's that question, but as far as I know, no, they would not own that piece.
They would not own it? Mr. Lackney, can we have a rezoning where the, this is a rezoning for Eagle Markell, but they're not gonna own the property that we, part of, one of the pieces of property that we're rezoning?
I mean, we can't rezone property if the applicant, that the owner didn't ask to rezone.
We have, we have owner's permission, the, yeah.
It doesn't matter if Eagle Markell doesn't own the commercial? No, you have developers all the time that do rezonings before they close on a transaction.
Well, I'm not talking about before closing, I'm talking about after closing. This is after closing.
Yeah, as, as long as they have the permission of the landowner, we don't know what trans relationship or agreements they may have in place.
So, Eagle Markell will have no control over the commercial side?
They can probably better answer that, but my understanding is no.
And Markell Eagle would not own the commercial portion of the application that would retain ownership with the existing owners.
So, we have a two-phase development, and you only are responsible for one of it?
Markell Eagle would be responsible to develop the residential, the VRPD portion. So, of the rezoning, there's the VRPD and the CC.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you with the mask.
Yes, sir. Markell Eagle would be the builder and developer for the VRPD portion of this rezoning, while the Commerce Center CC portion would retain, would stay with the current owner.
Which is Sprouse Corner LLC?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We've already dealt with the age restriction. Mr. Pompey, I'd like, and now I'm, now I'm to page 131. The Planning Commission voted 5-0 against this, and you list some of the things that they've listed. You're recommending approval. This is the same question we had last week, our last meeting. What did the Planning Commission get wrong?
And I'd say they didn't get anything wrong. They were particularly concerned about transportation, you know. Staff recommended approval for this, of this request since it aligns with many of the recommendations made in the comprehensive plan. It's located within one of our growth areas, Route 60 corridor east. The proper conditions address many of the potential impacts the project will have on the surrounding community. It realizes recommendations made in the major thoroughfare plan. It gets rid of one of our transition zoning districts, and it tries to combine multiple parcels to create a more cohesive project. The unfavorable attribute that staff listed was, you know, even though this project is posing several proper conditions that'll address potential transportation impacts, this project will have an impact on our local transportation network. And I think that particular sentiment was what the Planning Commission was particularly concerned with, was the transportation piece.
It'll have a negative impact?
Yes, yes, yes.
But?
So, I think, I think the Planning Commission had particular concerns about the transportation piece, and that's what heavily influenced their recommendation.
But while you've noted them, you don't have the same level of concerns?
No, I think a lot of the positive attributes outweigh that, that negative attribute.
Mr. Chairman, I'm finished. Questions for Mr. Pompey? Ms. Norvik, do you have any questions you would like to ask him?
I don't have any questions. As I said, mine were pretty much answered, so I don't wanna repeat. I will have some comments when we get to that portion.
Mr. Pompey, I've got a few things I'd like to go over with you. In the different matrices that you provided, as it, you know, pertain to the two projects, the Commerce Center and the VRPD, you've got yes, no, or uncertain for your answers as to whether they meet the bar? I'll look at minimum project size, you know, for Commerce Center, no. Open space features, uncertain. Environmental design, uncertain. Community character, uncertain. Going to the other one, environmental designs, some recommendations, but not all. Is it wise to go forward if we're not meeting these requirements that you've identified in the matrix? Is it something that we should be moving forward with, with, if it's uncertain? Or it's a no? Is that in any way an impediment for going forward with something?
So, the comprehensive plan is a guide. It's an advisory document that provides recommendations on how development should occur within the county. So, the way we broke this down, the way we set up our previous comprehensive plan is for each land use destination, there are some specifics of things that we'd like to see. I think this project, again, meets many of these land recommendations, land use recommendations, not, not all. And I think some of these are more detailed components that our ordinance addresses. So, for example, we talked about, you know, the community character piece for the Commerce Center. At this point in time, the applicant hasn't provided much detail about what the buildings would look like. But in the past few years, we have adopted ordinance amendments and other provisions that provide certain levels of detail and guarantees on what the quality of the development will be. So, in this case, at this point, the applicant has not proffered elevations. They have proffered different materials for the commercial component. But because we have relatively detailed architectural review requirements, we have some guarantees about the quality of the building. The Planning Commission will, will look at the architecture. So, that's just one example where different components of the project are reviewed at different times in the zoning ordinance. And I'm not concerned in that particular instance that we, as a county, will have negative impacts because we other ordinance requirements and processes that guarantee the quality of the development. So, I think the comprehensive plan is a, is a guide, and I do think we take that very seriously. We wanna make sure it meets many of the recommendations in the plan, and where it doesn't, analyze why that's the case or if there are other mechanisms that help get the outcome that the citizens and you all have said you wanted for development.
Let me just weigh in here for a second. And the comprehensive plan is a guide, but our zoning is how we take that vision and we actually do it. So, when we have things, you know, from our zoning ordinance, that probably should be followed, shouldn't it? You know, like requirements for minimum size, open space? That's in our zoning ordinance, isn't it?
Yes, and that would be, and that's, that's kind of what I'm saying, is, you know, the comprehensive plan is a vision. Over the past few years, we've made some ordinance amendments that implement that vision. So, they still have to meet the open space requirement at site plan approval. Just at this time, at the conceptual level, we don't know the exact size.
Then I'm meeting the minimum size for Commerce Center.
That's a recommendation in the comp plan. That's not a zoning requirement for the, the size of the project. So, you all may find it appropriate in certain instances to have a smaller project. So, it's not an ordinance requirement, that's a recommendation.
I'd like to ask the applicant one more question, please. I think next time, we're gonna have lawn chairs and, you know, have two or three of them, you know?
That sounds great.
Placed around the podium. Going back to your parks, you say you have two parks?
Yes, sir.
What's in those parks? And how big are they?
So, we have two parks, like, like you said, the Village Green. The Village Green Park is along the main road, the connector extension in the major thoroughfare plan that will connect through our site from Page Road.
That's the part where you're talking about the trees?
No, the Village Green is.
I'm trying to get a handle, you know, I've got all kinds of ideas about what parks are.
This would be a linear green park. Homes would front on this park, and this provides a green space right along the street.
So, it's a green space?
It is a green space. It would have benches and streetlights and enhanced landscaping, have street trees along the, the main road there. And then, the Donnelly Creek Park and Preserve would be the more natural, kept more in its natural state.
So, the tree preserve would have what in it?
It would have a walking trail through it.
Okay.
That would circle the pond with the fountain and connect the different parts of the neighborhood. The trail would also stub to the adjacent parcels to allow for a connected trail network when any parcels adjacent would be developed in the future. Grab exact information. All right, so the Village Green is about 3/4 of an acre. It is the linear space where the two little letters are up there. And the Donnelly Park and Preserve is around seven acres. And the Page Road buffer, it's a 125-foot natural buffer along Page Road. That comes out to 1.8-ish acres.
I'm not counting those as a park, right?
Correct, that's not a park. I'm sorry, that was open space calculation. And I do have something I'd like to show you, if I may. It's regarding the Commerce Center parcel. There have been, you know, it, we're not sure what's gonna go there right now. We don't have any proposed users. But what we do have is a diagram that shows how the site would be laid out with the different ordinance requirements, the buffers, the setbacks. It might be handy. I can pull it up on the screen if you'd like. It's in my presentation. Would that be helpful?
Board members, would you like to see it?
Yeah.
It mattered me.
It's all the way at the bottom. Yep, the purple, yeah. So, there's a 75-foot buffer minimum setback, I'm sorry, along Route 60. And then there's the 15-foot basic buffer B that wraps up the purple parcel and around. Then you have the 10-foot corner setback around, along the, the road on each side of the road. Have paper copies, if that would be easier.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant, for staff? If you want us to take a minute and look at that before we go forward, you may. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any comments from board members?
Mr. Williams? I would like to, I know this is your district, but one thing I would like to explore is the option of the applicant putting the turn lane in at Holly Hills.
Only at Holly Hills?
The two that we discussed, the Holly Hills and then the right acceleration lane.
Right, coming, coming out. So what does that mean?
A deferral. If she can't commit tonight, which she can't, yeah, I would like them to possibly look at that. And I, I would be willing to, you know, defer this for 30 days.
Ms. Jim.
When you say the right out, the acceleration lane...
Correct, there's not currently one.
Where are you talking, are you talking about heading east on 60?
Heading west, if you're coming out of the development. When you come out having acceleration lane where you can merge into traffic.
And then a right-hand turn lane into Holly Hills?
That's correct.
Correct. The one that concerns me more is the right into Holly Hills. That seems to be the, the more of the hangup.
Ms. Chairman?
Mr. Cox?
I would prefer we vote on this this evening.
Mrs. Carmack, would you like to make a motion and we will take them in order?
Okay. I move we defer this case to our September meeting.
Our regular scheduled September board meeting.
Mm-hmm.
There's the motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion?
Ms. Chairman?
Mr. Barley?
To make sure that, that we're all clear, we're gonna defer till September, me particularly, and see if the applicant is willing to proffer a right-hand turn lane heading east on Route 60, turning south into Holly Hills. We're gonna see if the applicant is willing to proffer an acceleration lane heading west when you're sitting at this development facing south, turning west on Route 60. Those are the two.
So two, one, one going into Holly Hills as you go east and then an acceleration lane when you take the right out to the entrance in the north of the proposed development.
Thank you.
Okay. So the, the question, you know, is in my mind right now, yes, will the right turn lane into Holly Hills improve traffic going into Holly Hills? Yes, it will. But as the traffic engineer explained, that really isn't the problem today as we're talking about this proposed development. I think he did a good job in answering Mr. Barley's question about why it wasn't considered, but yet was considered on the north side of the road in the afternoon. So the question is, do you want to defer it if you're, as I am right now, I am, public safety is my number one priority? And I am not convinced that these two proffer proposals are going to change that south throughput movement in the left turns. It's not gonna help. You already had F and you're gonna worsen F, you can't go to G because they don't have a G. All right, we have a motion.
Ms. Chairman?
Mr. Cox?
As I look at this development, whether we do anything with Holly Hills or not does not do anything to improve the quality of the development. We're trying to leverage off-site proppers and that's not going to change the traffic situation, is not going to change the other elements of this project. And so I don't see that we get an advantage by waiting.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Ms. Chairman?
Mr. Barley?
Not to correct you, but I think I heard something different than what you heard.
Very different, yeah.
If what you just said is what you heard, that's not what I heard the traffic engineer say.
Oh, correct, my pleasure.
I, I think if, if, he might want to step back up, but the, the westbound Route 60, left turn lane, south, that's the turn lane that he says doesn't have as much impact as his lane.
Right, because in the afternoon...
Yep.
The traffic is going to the west, it's not going to the east. So there's not as large of a problem crossing over there.
But I think his, his, I'm not sure he even expressed an opinion on the right turn lane, if you're going east on Route 60, the turn lane south into Holly Hills. I don't know that he expressed an opinion there.
Remember you were talking about increasing the queuing because it was, you know, I think it was 100 feet? And he said it was at the 95th percentile today.
That's, that's on the left-hand turn lane from the westbound lane.
Right, from the westbound, going west, going and doing the crossover to the south, you would be in the afternoon, going, traffic would be less than what it is in the morning. And the morning is where all the traffic is.
Correct. And what I think Ms. Carmack wants is a right-hand turn lane going east into Holly Hills.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've, we've known we need a turn lane going into Holly Hills for some time.
So that, that's an issue of public safety. We agree on that.
I'm not sure it's related to the mitigating impacts of this development. That right-hand turn lane, I don't think has anything to do with this development.
Has nothing to do with this development. Does this intersection have anything to do with this development?
The right-hand turn...
The right-in turn lane is what we're talking about.
Yep, the right-in turn, southbound. From 60 east. You have a car traveling 55 mile an hour, as we all know, they probably run 65. And there's a car in the right-hand lane that's gonna turn into Holly Hills. There's a car also in the left-hand lane that wants to turn left into Donnelly Creek. Then there's this turn that, that car in the right-hand lane to turn south into Holly Hills. If you're familiar with that turn, you have to come probably to a five mile an hour to turn in there. So that traffic that now is behind that car, has everybody shifting to the center, if you look at turn lane, two lanes on 60, and then turn lane left. There's only one lane left there for them, for those cars to go in.
I'm, I'm gonna put the, put the motion on hold and I'm gonna call back to traffic engineer.
Good idea.
Because we can, we can sit here and discuss this among laypeople and get it wrong.
So how would you like me to do it?
Welcome back. All right, the question, the question is, before us, what does, y'all did not consider proffering a right in into Holly Hills as you're going east today?
That's correct.
Okay. And the reason you didn't make that proffer was because what?
We had no traffic to that movement. Our site traffic doesn't impact that specific movement. From an operational standpoint, that movement operates fine. It's more of a, I think more of a nuanced element here that you guys are hitting on is, which is the overall safety and efficiency of that through movement on 60, allowing the right turns out of the through lane and then slow down for the right turn lane. You, you increase the, or improve the opportunity for the throughs to get through without any conflict.
But again, the reason you didn't consider is because you said your development didn't impact that situation.
Doesn't impact that situation.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. So let me understand this. We're asking for a proffer from this developer for something their traffic does not impact? I just, that, that's what he just said.
We're not having a conversation, go through the chair.
Yep.
Mr. Barley?
If it's an intersection that has a, an F, I'm trying to look at, from my perspective, to cars, and I think they refer to it as a three-leg and it's going to a four-leg intersection, for everybody traveling, everybody, not his residents or his commercial business, everybody that's on Route 60 at that time. Now, if the traffic engineer doesn't think that the traffic coming out of Donnelly Creek interferes with somebody traveling east on Route 60 in the right-hand lane that wants to turn south on Holly Hills, I'm not a traffic engineer. I don't pretend to be one. But I know if I drive down the road and there's a car running 60 mile an hour and they want to turn right in there, it becomes very dangerous if there's a car that's gonna turn left into their development. I'm stuck in the right-hand lane on Route 60. And I think from Ms. Carmack's proposal, if they want to proffer that and it gives us an opportunity to protect citizens, I'd like for them to answer the question as opposed to us answering the question whether they want to proffer it or not.
Mr. Lashin? Can we ask for this proffer?
Um...
Can we turn it down if they don't agree to do it?
Well, the, the second, the Holly Hills turn because it's an off-site, they don't, they don't want to proffer that, I don't think we could deny it based on a refusal to proffer that.
Okay.
The thing that, Ms. Chairman? The thing that I'm a little perplexed by is we study intersections with every rezoning. Why all of a sudden Holly Hills is exempt? With any rezoning, we look at intersections staggered out within a five-mile radius.
I'd like to call the traffic engineer back up one more time.
Now all of a sudden this one is...
I'm gonna make a dis, I'm gonna try to get you that distinction. Sir, the definition of an intersection, does that include the right in across from the development?
Yes.
Okay. So you didn't see that as an impact coming from your development?
We do not add traffic to that movement.
Yeah. Your traffic, you know, for going through, taking a left turn, going west, or any through movements coming out of the development, does that affect that right in?
No.
Thank you, sir. So the motion that's been seconded, a motion by Mrs. Carmack is to defer until the September regular meeting, the applicant's request for rezoning such that they can consider coming forward with a change to their plans that would incorporate a right turn lane going into Holly Hills coming from the east and an acceleration lane coming out of the proposed project to the north. That is the motion. We've had the discussion. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Cox?
Mr. Lackney? I, I understand the motion. Going forward, if they don't proffer either of those options and we choose to deny this rezoning, does that give us any problems?
If the applicant doesn't want to proffer either one and the denial is based on that, it could potentially, especially the second one, the Hollywood Hills one, because it's off-site and, and state law says it's gotta have some impact from the development.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Carmack, do you want to amend your motion just to include the one that's directly affected by the site?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Smith, would you call the roll? And the motion is for the deferral.
Deferral, okay.
And for the two stated reasons.
Ms. Norvick?
No.
Mr. Barley?
Aye.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Will they move to the next item on the agenda?
No.
No.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Now, I need a motion going forward. I will make a motion to deny the rezoning. And let me get the number here. The motion is to deny the rezoning request for... Deny the rezoning request for ordinance zero dash 2020 oh four, case 19 dash oh six dash R E Z C. Motion is for denial of the rezoning request.
I second that.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cox?
As I've looked at this project, I have four things that concern me. One of the interesting things is we have 395 pages that describe what we're supposed to do with ordinances. And they're detailed, they're involved. But one of the most interesting pieces is right at the start. It tells you why we have the zoning ordinances, the general purpose and intent. The general purpose and intent of the 395 pages is to promote public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens. But this chapter is also adopted for specific purposes and intent. The second intent of the 13 that are listed for the 395 pages is to reduce or prevent congestion in public streets. We're not doing that. Part of our strategic plan, which is in draft form and planned, and the strategic plan from other boards, has said we need to reduce the percentage of real estate tax revenue generated by residential component, which is currently 92%, and increase the percentage of the commercial component, which is currently estimated at 8%. This project takes us in a wrong direction. We eliminated the RC zoning district because it promoted piecemeal development. This plan does exactly the same. We have a piece that will be developed by another party, not by Eagle, with no information to help us or tell us where it's going. And it does not finally conform with our access management standards, even though there were options to make it conforming. So for those four reasons, I cannot support this.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman, I have some comments.
So we've had a second, and so we're having comments. Mrs. Carmack?
I'd like to bring a little different perspective to this development. I served on the planning commission for 13 years prior to serving on the board. And since 2010, we've advertised this area as a growth area. From 2010 to 2019, it was designated as Village Center, which is the high-density residential that no one wants, the apartment complexes, et cetera, which this whole board unanimously agrees is not what we want to see on Route 60. However, in 2019, in the 2019 update, it was switched to Village Residential, which still allows residential development, but at lower densities, density similar to the surrounding area. In reality, for this area, two acres is not that dense. I also want to stress, this was not one of the development areas that was changed at the last minute by the previous board. There was some controversy about... There was some controversy about several members of the old Board of Supervisors making last-minute changes that did not have proper public advertising. Again, this is not one of those properties. I was actively involved in both the initial writing and the update of our comp plan. The reasoning, the reasoning behind putting this at Village Residential was to have a phasing of sorts. Behind the commercial part of 60, it was going to get dense, and then less dense, and less dense as you moved out. Keep in mind, it's in our water and sewer district, which due to the lack of hookups is costing each of our citizens seven cents on the real estate tax rate. You want lower taxes, we need water and sewer hookups. When I ran for the board, I ran on having limited targeted residential growth in appropriate areas. I also ran on working to alleviate the citizen burden in paying for water and sewer. To me, this development fits that bill. It's fewer than a hundred homes, as they actually reduced the amount of homes from the original amount that they asked for per my request while I was on the planning commission. It's age-targeted, another request follows on the planning commission, and there's no impact on our schools. We'll talk about the roads for a minute. Again, we have in our comprehensive plan, which we have advertised and used it, used as our guide for every other development over the past ten years. We have said the development of new roads will largely be paid for by the development community. We have had the connector road between Page and 60 listed in our major thoroughfare plan for a decade, maybe longer. They're building the road, they're asking for a waiver. The waiver they're asking for is so they don't have to put their development through their shopping center. You always want a road to line up with the crossover. I can't think of a rezoning we have done in recent history where we have not had some sort of access management waiver in some way, shape, or form. It's age-restricted, yes, some of the people are going to work, some aren't. I think the reality is, there is some development that's going to go here. There is not an intersection, from what the gentleman said, that's operating at higher than a level of Service F during peak hours. And we're gonna, you're gonna have an impact whether it's commercial development, residential development, light industrial development. And lastly, I do want to address the age-restricted part. We have an aging population, and we have a dearth of housing for citizens over fifty-five. Many older folks who have lived in Powhatan their whole lives who want to stay here, but they don't want to take care of five, ten, twenty acres, and they want to live a little closer to town. I'll use my parents as an example, not for dramatics, but perspective. We moved here over thirty years ago. My father opened a business, my mother got engaged in the community, has done more for the community than anybody I know. They're eighty-two years old and would like to move, but there's not a lot of options. I know many, many people say, you know, well, that's not a big deal, let them move to Midlothian. But you know what? Midlothian's not home, Powhatan is. Therefore, I am in support of this development.
Any other comments on the motion? I have a few comments.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I couldn't hit unmute quick enough. I do have some comments too, so whoever you want to go first.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Norvik, you go.
Okay, thank you. I have some of the similar concerns that I've heard already, and any questions that I had, as I said, were answered, but, um, and at the risk of repeating some of what Mr. Cox already said, I have a few more than four, and I'll click down them real quick. And Karen, I appreciate the fact that you were on the planning commission for twelve or thirteen years, and I understand that, but we have a new planning commission, and you didn't really do the heavy lift with this planning commission on this particular project, and I have to kind of trust the appointees that we have now working on this project currently. So it means a lot to me that the planning commission examined this, did the heavy lift, and voted five against. That, that carries a lot of weight with me. I also briefly conferred with my appointee, and I'm, I'm standing as a no tonight, I'll tell you right now. Other concerns I have, you know, Karen, again, you, you brought up the water. That water, for those of us who have been on the Board of Supervisors for a long time, that was definitely intended for commercial use, not residential. So yeah, it'd be great to, um, you know, not have to, to flush the system as often and open up the other half of Do Toy and, and all of that, but we should be doing that through commercial, not residential. Schools, maybe a minor impact there, but to me, that's balanced by the fire and rescue component, because it is an aging-out community, specifically fifty-five and over. We're going to have more calls for heart attack, stroke, falling, et cetera. We've already been struggling to keep our fire and rescue people staffed. We've gone to full-paid, um, full-time, a fire and rescue personnel, and this would aggravate that situation at a point where I'm not sure we can do it. That might also mean another piece of equipment or two, which is very expensive on that side. So I, I'm thinking about that. Okay, the, the cut through. Holly Hills, I know very well, I've walked to every door in Holly Hills more than one time. Holly Hills is my most congested per capita neighborhood in the entire district. I have many times driven out from not only Holly Hills, the main entrance, if you will, but also Dogwood, the other entrance and exit. Both of them are a nightmare, and in the morning, it's just absolutely horrendous. Some people actually turn left in the morning, and that makes it even worse. That's, that's just a bad situation. The traffic study doesn't take into account some other things, actually. For example, um, people in the morning now are looking for a cut through to get to 711, and I didn't hear anybody address that part. I myself have an office in Innsbruck, up on the West End, and here's how the traffic flow actually occurs now on many a morning. I try to avoid 288 because it's a parking lot as you approach the river. So what people do is they try to go all the way to Huguenot Springs, past Windy Hill, take a left, go up Huguenot Springs, get on 711, and then use that entrance ramp to cross the James River. Well, there's a little problem with that that's developing, and that's the light at Old Hundred Road. So what's the next place closer to cut over? Well, that would be Manneken Town Ferry Road, and if this were built, there'd be a strong temptation, even to me, to not have to go up to the Shell Station intersection, but to cut through this new road, get on Page, take a left on Manneken Town Ferry, go up to 711, and avoid 288 that way. That doesn't show up in any traffic study, but I can tell you, I'd be tempted to do that. What else? The ninety-two eight that, that Mr. Cox mentioned, we might even be flirting with ninety-three seven now, this makes that problem worse, I'm pretty big on that. Palatine-friendly commercial growth is what I see along 60, I'm not a fan of residential along 60 anymore. The comp plan was brought up. Oh wait, one more thing about the age restriction. Anybody from fifty-five to sixty-seven might still be working. So to just say, oh, it's age-restricted, so that's not going to contribute to the morning or evening rush hour, that's just flat-out not true. I fall into that age group, and I go to work every day. There are a lot of people that, in this age group, go to work every day. So I'm not, I, I'm not a big fan of, of saying that age-restricted neighborhoods don't add to the rush hour problem, I think indeed they do. And then lastly, the comp plan, um, it may be a little unfair to a developer right now, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of say it this way. The future land use map and the comp plan as is, was voted down by myself and Mr. Williams, and we just said last week that we're going to take a, kind of a quick run at it, again, a Reader's Digest version, if you will, of what took three years. We're going to hopefully just take a few months and come up with new comp plan, which as Mr. Cox said, drives subdivision ordinances and zoning, et cetera, et cetera. I have no idea how this is going to fit into that, and, um, seeing as how I voted against the current one, and I'm uncertain about the future one, that does enter into my thinking. We may be building something that is a square peg in a round hole, and we don't even know it yet. But that one thing doesn't really enter into my yes-no decision, it was just more food for thought for me, but the other points definitely do. So I, I have a lot of reasons I'm not big on this project, so I'm a no vote tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Norvik. I will be brief. I was on the planning commission in 2004 when we developed the access management standards with Kurt Turner from Chesterfield, who later was the planning director. It was important back then, it's been important to me ever since then. Now, it was stated that, you know, every development has had some type of waiver to our access management standards, that's simply not true. And we had a situation with two projects here in the county, CBS and Lockstone, where some things went awry, we fixed them. But this wasn't David Williams of the board knowingly, in those two cases, usurping our access management standards. Because as I've said before, they're pretty much sacrosanct with me, because how we get in and out of this county is of paramount importance. That's the challenge that we have with the upcoming comp plan update, is how do we look at these crossovers? How do we mitigate truly how we're going to get onto Route 60, particularly from the north side? Because however you come out of this development, you're going to have to confront that problem unless you do, like Mr. Norvik said, and try to go over to 711, and we know what a good road that is. So to get out, you're going to have to take the stoplight at Lockstone, or you're going to have to test the crossover at the state police, that Carter-Gallia, or you would have to come out at the proposed new entrance of the development, or you would have to go down to the Shell Station. No good options. No good options. So I'm looking forward to the update of the comp plan and stressing access management plan and a thoroughfare plan that allows us to be able to live and commute, because we are a bedroom community, make no mistake about it. The jobs are enrichment in Raco, Chesterfield. We get up in the morning, we drive to 288, tide goes out and the tide comes back in the evening. So access management and a good thoroughfare plan is going to be real quick on this comp plan update, and that's what I'm going to be guided by. That and public safety, that's our number one priority. Okay, Mr. Smither, would you call the roll, please? And the motion is to deny.
Mr. Norvik?
Judges, to be clear, an aye vote is denying the project, correct?
It is correct.
Aye.
Mr. Barley?
Aye.
Ms. Carmack?
No.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Now, we'll move to our next public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This resolution, R 2020 dash forty-eight, amends the fiscal year twenty-one budget for the second round of CARES Act funding for Powhatan County. If approved, the budget will be amended to reflect an additional 2.587 million available to the county, plus a second schools CARES Act grant for an additional 233,000. I'd like to bring to the board's attention the, the management of this grant, Mr. Kurt Ellis and Charlotte Schubert, they've done a great job of managing the, the requests for this grant and making sure they're vetted properly. Thank you, Kurt and Charlotte. Currently, we have obligated or spent approximately $2 million of qualified costs, including the grants authorized for local businesses and nonprofits. We have an additional list of projects to review totaling $1.8 million, leaving $1.36 million for other projects as they arise. Uncertainty remains as an, as an issue over the next four months, particularly with our school system and, and local government, and how COVID-related topics could be applied. I'll be glad to answer any questions about the appropriation that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Smither?
Can you give us some details of what we're looking at, on using? The money's for?
Yes, ma'am, I can. We have currently got, we have spent, are obligated about $1.9 million of projects that were in our school systems, we had $160,000. Charlotte, I won't be able to get the details on every one of the expenses of, no, in, in schools, it's $160,000 to date. We have a, the two grant programs that you're familiar with, one for the businesses and also for the nonprofits, they're totaling $600,000 apiece, when you combine the two appropriations. So that's about a million two combined. Other large amounts would be disinfection sanitation costs, to date is $213,000. Safe access to government, I'm not exactly sure that, the, the component parts of that, we had $116,000 we spent on that. Building modifications and compliance, $132,000. And operation of government services at $428,000, a total of about $1,009,000 that we've allocated to date.
Okay. Have we considered using any funds to enhance broadband? Has that been a, the potential use? Can we discuss that a little bit?
Sure, it's, it's been a topic for, for staff to research and make sure we understood the moving parts from the CARES Act and what was allowed and what wasn't allowed.
Okay.
And there's language that, you know, we, we discussed today, that's, that could be confusing. It's staff's opinion that CARES Act funding, if used for the right purposes, does qualify for broadband. And it, it really, it is limited to learning in schools and telemedicine at home.
Okay.
And but to keep, the key part of that is for, for us, our external auditors, Brown and Edwards, will be the ultimate judge of our cost being allowed or not. So we, we can try to understand the language now, what, what works and what does not. Brown and Edwards, as part of their single audit, will, will give us the final goal, and we're talking with them now to let, to ask, you know, are we right? You know, is, is, is broadband allowed or not? And we're hoping to get an answer back from them, that will give us a, a great feedback in advance of what's allowable and what isn't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Norvik.
So, Mr. Smither, and that would apply to broadband only in District Two, in the southern portion, is that correct?
No, sir.
Oh, well, a guy's got to try.
I'm sensing a coup.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Cox.
Ms. Smither, is it, when you say we can use CARES money for broadband, is there a time limitation on that?
Great question, yes. The, one of our biggest constraints is a 1231, it is a 1231 2020 deadline for spending the money. And any, most, if, we have to go up for procurement in order to get a, a proper contractor hired, and to do that, we could spend another month from today's date to get the proper partner in place.
But we actually have to spend the money before the health emergency is gone, or 1231, whichever comes first?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How would we figure out who's eligible for a, a project for broadband?
Let me follow up with your question, Mr. Cox. I just think I heard it was for schools or for home medical. So I understand your question.
The question is, now we've got an area that's got fifty people, make up a number. Not all fifty of them would meet the, meet the bar, would they? I mean, I don't know what the number would be, but, and so we would have to have a mechanism for dividing up what we're paying, first of all, assessing somehow who, who qualifies and who doesn't qualify, and carving out those that are eligible under CARES and those that are not. Okay. Thank you.
So you're going to get something from Brown and Edwards that's going to get some clarity and some certitude on this so that we can have a further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask one other question about that?
Please.
Since you're going to be talking with them, and that's about our single audit, right?
Yes, sir.
This, doesn't this say that we can use funds to cover the expense?
Cover it under a single audit?
That is very true. Good.
Mr. Chairman? Ms. Barley? It's a, it's an interesting topic, the broadband and the CARES Act money. I don't think it's a hidden known fact, right or wrong, I guess we'll know from, from Brown and Edwards, but I would be one that would probably say, as long as they apply, and say we can use it, and we should use it in the broadband aspect. To increase broadband, we've all got those emails endlessly from citizens who, it's elevated now because of the COVID situation and the distance learning. So we have to be able to take a first step.
So we have to be able to take a first step, in my opinion. And I'm in favor of taking that first step with the guidance of the, of the auditors, of course. But when we have small areas, of course, Mr. Norvick's district, we don't want to leave him out. We gotta keep him in, since now he's coming up closer to the.
Yeah, I'm, I'm listening. Go ahead.
There's, there's definitely citizens in District 3 that I represent that is a number close to what you just happened to mention, it's actually a little less than 50, that is in a very small area that has some density to it with housing. There's probably 30, 35 houses within three quarters of a mile who do not have it. And I think that's a good opportunity for a first step. We can't get to step two until we take step one. We've applied for the USDA grant with Firefly, which I think, you know, that's primarily for District 4 and 5, the western end of the county, and we don't want to do anything to jeopardize that funding opportunity. But in, in searching around, I will tell you this, that Bedford County is spending $1.5 million of their CARES Act money for broadband. That's dated August the 18th, 2020, out of the Lynchburg News in Advance. They're doing wireless in Bedford, and it was a four to three vote, doesn't that makes any difference? But another thing, Campbell County in Virginia, they're, they're spending $1.5 million of CARES Act funding for broadband. I don't want to get into where we have to give money back for improperly, and just because two people jump off the, the bridge into the river don't mean we should, but I hope that we will get some strong consideration to using this CARES Act money for broadband, because distance learning with the school system, and in three weeks, the school system could be shut down. I don't know. I don't have that fortune, I don't have that crystal ball. But I, but I do think that we should put ourselves in a position to take a step. And we want to make a good step. We want to make a good, smart, wise step. I think that maybe it's a, it's a worthwhile thing, because there is a time element to this, that maybe we find a way to, to at least begin the process to find out how much it would cost us to do this. That doesn't commit us to doing anything, but at least we know if there's XYZ number of residents in District 2 that could use broadband, and XYZ number of residents in District 3, or 1 that could use broadband, we can have an idea of how much money it is. We need to be prepared, because we are in a timeframe, unless, of course, there's more money that comes and the rules of the game change, because they've been real consistent since March the 12th. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barley, we need to have a public hearing. Are you, you got another question you want to ask or statement?
Yes, sir.
Please.
It's unknown, and I agree with Mr. Barley with, with, with most of what you've said. If we get the Firefly grant, what the county will look like is, is if you covered it with a piece of Swiss cheese. There's gonna be a lot of it that has coverage, but there're going to be holes. There're gonna be holes in District 5, District 4. And if, in fact, we are fortunate enough to get there, then we've got to have a wholly different way of looking at it, which is what you're suggesting, Mr. Barley, of trying to fill in these holes, which are going to be difficult. I, for one, am confident that I'm going to live in one the rest of my life, okay? Because I, I am a party of one. I don't have 50. So in terms of how we look at this, I think if, if Firefly comes together, we have a, we have different approaches for, for different holes, because we're gonna have different pieces, okay? And I think we're gonna have to use every single tool we've got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing that we're required to have on this resolution. Anybody wishing to come forward, please give your name, your address. We will allow you three minutes. If you represent a group, we will allow you five minutes. Seeing anyone come forward, I will close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry.
She popped on, and now she's off. So I'm sorry. She's back on again.
Okay, please.
Ms. Farley, you raised your hand?
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Claudia Farr. My address is 4150 Maidens Road in Powhatan. I've lived here nearly all of my adult years.
Are you seniors?
Yes.
Okay. Hold tight. This public hearing. Stay right where you are, we'll bring you. The next public comment period is following.
Okay.
Wait, is she waiting?
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please? I mean, to approve the resolution.
If, if, if we approve the resolution, does that mean we're gonna be able to at least do some type of, of a pricing of what it costs?
All this does is accept the money.
Okay.
We're just moving the money. Is this the second? Okay, all right.
Okay, now, can I have a motion?
Yes, I make motion that we approve a resolution, R. 2020-48.
Second.
Any discussion on a motion? Mr. Smither, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Norvick.
Aye.
Mr. Barley.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye. All right. I know somebody's gonna be real happy. We're gonna open the second public comment. Mr. Smither.
Okay, Ms. Farley, we've got, if we see you raise your hand, we're looking forward to talking to you.
Okay. And thank you so much. This is the first time I've zoomed into a board meeting, and I will get the hang of it. Okay. As you all know, I'm Claudia Farr. My address is 4150 Maidens Road in Powhatan. I've lived here almost all my adult life, and I strongly support the proposed program for seniors, specifically a senior center that Jane Lloyd spoke about earlier this evening. I'm retired from full-time work just this past January, and I've been privileged to serve as a volunteer for the county's Rite Assist Services. And through that volunteer work, I've had the pleasure of having phone conversations with a great number of their seniors, as one senior to another, about the terrific services that are provided by Rite Assist Services. And in those conversations, I've come to learn that we have a very vibrant and interesting senior population, however, often largely homebound. And they have demonstrated to me in talking with them that there'd be such value in establishing a senior center in our county. You know, we can provide ourselves, our loved ones, the generations as they get older, real opportunities for some healthy aging, some social engagement and well-being through connections with their community. This will help us to continue to live independently as long as, as possible, and stay in our own homes as long as we wish to. You know, having a senior center and senior activities can give some meaning and purpose to our lives. Things that happen at such centers, new friendships are made, activities can really delight us, and we can become more involved with the community. So I would urge the board to remember the proposal and to support it in, as, as things move along, because I see nothing but good that can come out of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for hanging in there with us.
My pleasure.
I bring us to the part of the agenda where county attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
County administrator comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Board comments?
Mr. Chairman, we had a question about Ag Forestal Districts earlier, but those ladies have departed, so we won't answer.
Why don't you just, for a second, recap, if you can briefly, what people are hearing right now, and why, and what's really going on?
There's a fair amount of confusion, because there are two separate programs that exist. One is the Ag Forestal District Program, and the other is land use made up of forestry uses and agricultural uses. And they're two totally separate programs. Both of them have reduced tax rates as part of them. We are required by statute to review the Ag Forestal District every 10 years, and that's what we're, we're in the process of doing. The Ag Forestal Advisory Committee is going to meet sometime in September. We're trying to get those dates together, should be late September, to start the process of evaluation of the program and to make a recommendation to the board supervisors, which will be looking at this program in December. There's another question that has come up, because of the question, the county has sent a series of questions to the AG, the Attorney General, asking for information about rollback. There were questions that we were unsure of. We asked our county attorney to take a look at how we could resolve that, and he has penned a request to the AG, which has been delayed kind of forever, like everything else in this world. I think one of the interesting things about the Ag Forestal District is it has not changed much since it was inception. There haven't been so much movement. I've been on the Ag Forestal Advisory Committee for at least eight years. We've never met. We don't meet unless we have to. But in the Ag Forestal District, that is run by the county by statute. The Ag Forestal Committee decides who is eligible based on the requirements of statute. Either puts them in, puts them out. Then the board supervisors has to vote on that. In land use taxation, that is Mr. Timberlake's world. And Mr. Timberlake administers and runs that based on statute. And he has a program to administer that. But two separate programs, we're not getting rid of forestry use under the land use taxation world at all. We're reviewing another program because we're required to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Any other board comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Please, Mr. Norvick.
It just occurred to me, we've been talking about senior citizens and, and frankly, a lot of other people who might feel isolated. And you can see I've changed my location. I'm now in Paris. I just wanted to bring up that if you are looking for interesting things to do and learn, a lot of museums have now the ability to do remote tours, and you can do either a live one, or you can do an archive one or self-guided tour. So the Louvre or the British History Museum, there are several museums, the Smithsonian offers some. There's also ways to contribute to the community remotely. One that pops to mind, I've been involved with, is the Virginia Library down in Richmond. I'm talking the state library. They have a need for people to transpose written letters from going back 200 years even, and you just type in the words so that those letters can be searched digitally. And there's a lot of people that do it, actually. Some people have logged thousands of hours. There are a lot of projects you could do that are worthwhile, that give you a sense of meaning, that expand your worldview, your education at any age. So I encourage people to travel the globe remotely, since we can't do it in these days of COVID right now. And it just came to mind while we were discussing the senior issues. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Norvick. Mrs. Carmack.
All that's great, Mr. Norvick. We need internet. Let's take a look at that CARES money.
Well, I didn't, I didn't mean to tip myself up, and I'm actually in Paris, so, you know, didn't need the broadband this time. Did I head fake you? No, I'm not in Paris.
Okay. Any more comments? What time is it, Mrs. Carmack?
9:35.
I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at 9:35.